It's 6:50 PM and it is February 18, 2020. Board members should have a copy of the agenda in front of you as well as notes from town planner and town engineer. If you don't say so, we'll get them to you. For the audience, there are copies of the agenda out at the table as well as a few extra copies on the back table if you need one. We do have a full agenda. We have four hearings, two of which are connected, but they are separate on the left. And folks with us tonight, starting from my far left, our town engineer, Dennis Montal, next is Steve Hadfield, one of our board alternates, and since one of our regular board members, Robin, won't be here tonight, Steve, you're on the hot seat, you're going to be voting. Vice Chair Peter Coffin, Board Member Lynn Merrill, Selectment Rep Phil Coombs, Glenn Koppelman in this chair, to my right, Alan Falkner, our Administrative Assistant and alternate as well, and then Board Members Chris Bashaw and Peter Bakey, Town Planner Glenn Greenwood at that end. So, all right. So I'm going to read the legal notice for the first hearing. As I said, the first two hearings are related to one another, but we need to do one part of it before the other. And the first two hearings, the applicant is the same, it's Joseph Falzone. The property is at 53 Marshall Road, it's tax map R41 lot 7. And on this first hearing, it's that property as well as an adjacent parcel owned by Gabriel and Deborah Escobar of 51 Marshall Road, tax map R41 lot 8K. And this relates to a lot line adjustment between these two lots that would add .42 acres from the Hanson property to the Escobar property. Who is representing Mr. Falzone on this application? Okay, sir, if you could come up to the table here and to a mic where we'll be able to hear If it's easier for you just to speak from there, you do have a mic there.
I think for this one, Mr. Chairman, it's fine to hear and then I'll actually move.
Okay. So if, for the record, if you would just introduce yourself, please, and then introduce us to this application.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, Scott Wolf and Beals Associates. And here with me this evening, sitting through my lap, is Joseph Falzone, developer of the next application from the board being a subdivision. So basically, in short, we've had a long process in front of the board with a proposed subdivision, at which time we have discovered after a survey, there have been some improvements of the neighboring land on the parcel. The simple adjustment agreement made by Mr. Falzone with the Escobars is a simple adjustment which would then give the area contained within the horse ground improvements in fee to the Escobars.
Just for the record, are the Escobars here?
Yeah.
Okay. One, that's fine, thank you. If at any point you feel you want to say something, just let us know. It will be open up to the public when we get to the public comment period, since you're one of the applicants. If you have something to say now, you're certainly welcome to come up to the table. Don't speak, don't speak from there.
Okay. Yeah, we agreed on the adjustment.
Okay. Please, 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 don't speak until you get to a microphone.
Okay.
Thank you. And now introduce yourself.
Okay. Shortly after moving in, we had a horse pond added.
Would you just state your name for the record?
Gabriel Escobar.
Thank you.
I already said I wasn't Deborah. Anyway, shortly after moving in, we specifically moved there in order to put the two Atabarn and Accorall, and the measurements presented to us on our purchase would fit within the air. However, Mr. Falzone's surveyor was questioning the original survey in 1980 that our property, our purchase was made under, so we've agreed on an adjustment that works for both parties.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have comments from Dennis and Glenn on this one? Okay, Glenn, you had some at least.
I had two.
And could you borrow that mic back for him, please?
I have two. With the rebar and a cap, this is not allowed by regulation, all corner monuments must be concrete or granite. There is a note, 14, on sheet one of three, that indicates that a final monumentation plan is to be recorded, and this correction would need to be shown on that plan. And note two on sheet one of three indicates the proposed parcel size in square feet and acres. Oh. Of the Hanson parcel as a result of the boundary line adjustment. Only the revised information for Escobar is presented, so my request is that they actually also show the revised size of the Hanson parcel, because that's something that we typically have on our plans. So that would just be an amendment to that note.
So if the board approves of this, those would need to be conditions of the approval. Are you clear on those comments?
We are, we are.
Questions from the board, discussion? Glenn?
Just one thing, Mrs. Escobar's name is misspelled on the sheets.
Sorry, which one?
Oh, Durba, Durba instead of Deborah. I know, it's been a hundred times.
On the sheets.
Oh, yeah, it's Durba. It's correct in the note two.
On the plan set.
Well, that's an easy fix, but good catch on that one.
Tell her what stood out, she'll appreciate that.
Other questions from the board? Glenn, do you have something else?
No.
Peter, are you all set?
Yeah.
Gentlemen? Glenn or Dennis, any last words? Ellen, anything? Then we would be in a position... Oh, it is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public in butter or an interested party who has a question or something to say about this application on the subdivision part, on the lot line adjustment part of it, now would be your opportunity. I see no hands, I see nobody standing. All right, well, if there's no public comment, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board and if the board's inclined, they can make a motion.
Make a motion that we grant approval of the boundary line adjustment as presented on the conditions that sheet two of three titled Lot Line Adjustment and Subdivision Plan indicates that the rear western monument for the Escobar property, just whatever the rest of that paragraph, and also number two, note two on one of three should indicate the proposed parcel size of the Hanson property and that Mrs. Escobar's name be corrected on those plan sets.
So motion by Lynn, second by Phil. Lynn, on the one regarding the monumentation that included the correction of the monument itself as well.
Correct.
Just to be...
Yep, the entire paragraph.
Per your notes, Glenn?
Yep.
Further discussion from the board? Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously, and I didn't say it earlier, that we do have a full, with Steve sitting in for Robin, we do have a full seven member voting body here, so. All right, so that was unanimous?
Regular timeframe for meeting the conditions?
Unless the board says otherwise, the applicant has 90 days to meet the conditions of the approval. Is that satisfactory to the applicant?
Yes, sir.
So it will be that. And... Okay. And that's also the timeframe that... Forgetting the final plan's back to us, right? Or is that a different timeframe?
No, the conditions would be met and they will get it closed.
Yeah, right. So it's all tied together. So the second part of the first hearing is for the subdivision piece, which is the more significant part of the application, and it is also by Joseph Falzone. The address is 53 Marshall Road, tax, and we're starting this hearing at seven, the end of the first one at seven, starting this one at seven. They began at 6:50. Tax map R41 lot 7, and the property owner is Hazel W. Hanson Ayers. The applicant is proposing a seven lot, open space residential, single-family subdivision. So I think when the board saw this last, it was going to be more of an innovative design where it had a loop road, and I think the applicant has now come back with a different proposal based on some things that occurred on site, that restrictions that you were faced with, and so you now have a different plan. So we'll turn it over to you to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, Scott Wolf and Beals Associates. Thank you for illustrating some of the past history in the project. A little more update, as the chairman said, we had come in with an open space subdivision which consisted of a large open space components roadway with proposed drainage and utilities. We were tasked by the review engineer and the planning board for some commentary on the design. We went back and did our homework and came up with some solutions to the design. However, in that solution, some of the actual figures of construction were elevated to make the road comply to the town's regulations. Mr. Falzone then took another look at the project in a different way, and now we are back in front of the planning board for a standard frontage, seven lot subdivision. So these plans in front of you, what you should have are all of these seven lot subdivisions, pretty straightforward, seven dimensional lots, however, it is on a state road being Route 107. All the lots that you can see are all three acres greater in size. We have some rather large ones that go out to rear the property. We do have as a component for design, proposed three common driveways. This is the limit that is allowed by New Hampshire DOT. I have applied for the driveway permits with the District Six. A few weeks back, I did leave a message with Jim, District Engineer, District Six, and I do not know if you'll back from him at this time as to the status of the permits, but they are pending. So as you can see, it's a relatively straightforward design, they all have the frontage and sizing and the amount of buildable area on them. We have received two comment letters, one from Mr. Greenwood, and one from Dennis as well, with some planning and engineering comments. Before we get into that, I would just say, if we need a void, we'll leave it to Mr. Chairman for the addresses.
I'm sorry, I missed your question to me.
I just wanted to see if there's anything else the board would like to speak of before we get into the review comments.
Oh. Anything? Right at the moment? Thank you. You're good to go for now.
So moving forward, we have a letter from Mr. Greenwood. He has nine comments.
Would you like us to have both Dennis and Glenn go through their comments?
Certainly, that's fine with me, and we can adjust.
We typically do it that way, and then you're certainly welcome to respond to them.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, since you pulled yours out first, Glenn, you're going first.
So I indicate that this is the first public hearing for this proposal, so at some point the board needs to consider invoking jurisdiction. And from my perspective, I think that the board is complete enough, the plan is complete enough for the board to invoke jurisdiction, but that's a decision for the board to make. My comments upon reviewing the plan are as follows. One, the plan set must incorporate the town compliant monumentation as indicated in plan note 14 on sheet one of three. Sheet three of three shows wetland delineations and should be stamped by a wetland scientist responsible for the delineation. There are plan sheets where there are wetland stamps. I just prefer if there are any plans showing wetland delineations that they should have that stamp affixed. Town regulations require that 100-foot well radii be contained within the parcel boundaries. In instances where the radius goes over property boundaries onto unbuildable land, no further action is required. But if the radius encumbers land of and a butter that would be buildable, an easement for the radius must be granted. In this case, there are two lots that meet this requirement, lots two and three, they have small sections that go beyond the building setbacks for the lots. Proposed lots are required by town regulations to be lettered, not numbered, these are numbered, so they really should come into us as lettered. The proposal incorporates shared driveways. These must be permitted by the planning board. Driveway regulations for the town require driveways be 20 feet off property lines in the instances of two of the proposed driveways, this is not the case, lots two and four. Butter buildings and well in septic within 100 feet of the parcel boundaries need to be depicted on the plan unless no such facilities exist. Is NHDOT requiring easements along the frontage, the lot frontages for future road work? If they are, that those easements should be displayed. The plan should include a note detailing the existing and anticipated impervious area in square feet and percentage of lot area. And the test pits for the proposed lots six are not within the 4,000 square foot receiving area as required by town regulations, so they should either change the orientation of that 4,000 square foot area or dig new pits. Those are the options available to them. And those are my comments.
Did you want to take a crack at any of these now, or do you want to wait for Dennis to go through his and then we'll...
It's probably best to go over this one and then we'll go on to the other part of the later time. Certainly, the number one, the town compliant monumentation, that is not an issue, we will let you set survey to record, know that, and they will update the plan as necessary. Again, with the wetland stamp, we will certainly do that. What we try to typically do is we're not constantly going after the wetland scientists, is we'd like to do the existing conditions plans which do not change through the review process, and then provide final plans with all stamps necessary at the end. But we will certainly do that to address that, Glenn. And then number three, town requires 100-foot well radii be contained within the parcel boundaries. I do have a very quick plan that will describe basically the one... Remove of the wells to meet the criteria that there would not be any radii within the building envelope portion. If you could take one, Dennis, please pass it. So when you get to that, basically what I have done is the two lots that were in question, I slid, being away from the road and close to 2 Marshall Road, in a fashion that gets the 100-foot radius out of any...
Okay, so that comment then becomes moot with this adjustment?
Correct. So I'll wait till the other members get a copy. Did everybody see that? Make sure there's no issues. Basically, the well radii is just slightly moved a couple feet, and there's no buildable area taken up by the 100-foot well radii. So now, number four, proposed lots require town relation to be lettered, we will certainly do that, and we have no issue. It's probable courts share driveways, they must be perturbed by the planning board. Drive regulation for town required drivers be 20 feet off property lines. Now, that is obviously the case, however, it seems a little contrary to when you have a shared driveway, because at some point, the driveway has to cross the property line, which is obviously within 20 feet of the property line. So I wasn't quite sure how to address that. We have based this on the best sight distance we've brought available in the field. This is obviously under New Hampshire DOT jurisdiction, and as I said, I have not heard back from them. We can certainly slide them either way, so the entrance is 20 feet off, but eventually they're going to cross, of course, they would cross a property line at some point. And I did read the regulations on that section actually prior to coming here, and it does say that on major roads, it is encouraged by the planning board to have a reduced amount of driveway curb cuts. Number six, abutting buildings and well septic within 100 feet. I reviewed it as much as I could, Glenn, I know we have everything along Marshall Road. I think the only items that we may not have within that 100 feet is actually the Escobars. I believe everything else we have shown in the... We can have the survey, I'll look at that. I believe that that is it, though, on the preliminary report. Number seven is DOT requiring easements. As I said, I have not heard from Mr. Hewitt back. As soon as I hear, we will know. I did speak with him in a preliminary sense, and he did not say anything about requiring easements along the state highway. The existing and anticipated impervious area, that's just a slight calculation, we will add that to the plan as required. Number nine, test pits for the proposed lot six are not within the 4,000 square foot receiving area. That one is correct. I was, sometimes it's hard to go back and forth between state criteria and town criteria, the state allows you 20 feet now. So basically, simply on the same layout or handout that I had given you, the lot is very good in size, and there's a number of passing test pits. I simply just swapped the well and 4K area, so now the 4K is on different passing pits, and the well is now in front of it. So I kind of take care of that situation. So that's my response to those. I'm trying to get sure if there's anything else.
Anything from the board at the moment before we go to Dennis? Okay, Dennis, you're up.
Does microphones work on wide angle?
Adam, which is the best microphone for Dennis? One of those? Yes, he says.
You did get a coffee, it's fine.
Yep, yep, got it, very fine.
So, thank you, Robin. Review my comments for the board to consider. Zoning article 202, sheet two, a functional analysis shall be provided to determine the minimum wetland buffer width. Will this affect the buildable area on, shown on lot one, sheet six? It chose a 50-foot buffer and should justify that with a functional analysis. Number two, section 901, 1C8, for driveways greater than 150 linear feet, the NFPA requires driveways to be 20 feet wide. The plan shows 16 feet down to 10 feet wide. Also show that each driveway is to have an acceptable turnaround for emergency vehicles, fire, and ambulance. Plan should have a profile and should show cross-section detail for the driveways to verify all season stable base. Number three, section 901, 1C5 and 905, 11F, sheet two, the plan shows two double common driveways and one triple common driveway. This regulation requires no more than two driveways to any one parcel of land. Section four, I mean, number four, section 901, 1F, driveway shall conform to town, stand, entrance details show the distance to the center line of the swales, the culverts under the driveway with the proposed grades to and include the turnaround to comply with drainage requirements. Number five, section 905, 5B3, the development should show due regard for preservation and protection of existing features, including brooks and streams. This proposal shows four lots that extend to the rear of the property, crossing the brook and wetland resource area. In order for future owners to access their rear properties, multiple wetland crossings will be required. If the subdivision layout were modified with only one lot that would own the wetland and land beyond, there would only be one crossing needing, therefore minimizing the ultimate wetland disturbance. Should the board consider requiring this change? Number six, I mean, that's a comment that I'm making, it's just an opinion that I have, so. Number six, section 905, 6E, is note 20, sheet one, acceptable to the fire department? If not, driveway shall be located within 3,000 linear feet of a hydrant for water supply. Plan should show the distance from each driveway to a functioning hydrant. Number seven, the plan must show location and grading for mailbox turnout provided by the local postal service. Number eight, article 905, 14C35, lot numbers must be provided by the board of selectmen. Number nine, denote which sheets are to be recorded and the remaining sheets on file with the town. The soil scientists and surveyor stamps are required on plans to be recorded. Number 10, NHDOT and state subdivision permits are required. Number 11, article 905, 14. I believe, plan must comply with required monuments. All four corners and angle points of each lots must be monitored with, monumented with concrete or granite, pipes set at 200-foot intervals along lot lines. Number 12, 905, 14C6, the applicant should explain the disclaimer on note 12, sheet one of the existing conditions plan, clarifying what part of the plan this refers to. There are multiple benchmarks shown, but all are off-site, the regulations require benchmarks to be on the site. Number 13, the plan show an existing trail system that extends to abutting properties and across the town line into Brentwood. Are they active, and do abutters have rights for continued use? Should the plan specify continued use or not? And those are my comments at this point, so.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Would you like to give a crack at some of these, or...
I would. For item one, it's only article 202, a function value analysis shall be provided to determine minimum width buffer. I have copies here, that was actually done at the very beginning of the project, and the setbacks since then have not changed. I would assume that you had gotten a copy, but you may not have. This was prepared by Jim Gove back in May of 2019. I have a ten, I have three copies, just to be sure.
Was that included in the 13-foot subdivision table? So I was just saying that it was done at the beginning.
It was part of the convention of the EU we had done.
In the original application?
Yeah. That's why, that's why you want it. So I know the plan would understand for those of you who might be wondering what that is in the audience. Basically, some of the wetlands are done by their values on a point-by-point basis from the wetland scientist. He has created a report that derives what setback will be held, based on the value of the wetlands. So that has to be made for the board.
Sure, Scott, just one question. Lot 7-1 shows a 50-foot setback.
Based on the value of?
Which, which one does that imply?
Jim has a label that is B.
That means, that means 85 feet, then? Maybe.
Something does say 85 in his report.
You can check that out.
Yep, we'll certainly look at it. So Dennis has pointed out on Jim's report, under wetland B, it says an 85-foot buffer. We will look at that. Section, excuse me, number two, section 901, for driveways greater than 150 feet, I certainly agree the entrance needs to be 20 feet wide. That was my error, I would change those to the appropriate width. As far as the length, until I receive more data from New Hampshire DOT and exactly know where the driveway locations are going to be, I won't know the lengths required for each individual lot. So I was waiting to get more data from New Hampshire DOT on those. Upon getting that information, we will certainly provide what is needed for the driveways. Number three, section 901, C5, sheet two, the plan shows two common driveways and one triple common way. The regulation requires no more than two driveways to any parcel of land. I do agree with that statement, however, it does say to one parcel of land. So one individual with one lot cannot have more than two going to public right of it. The sentence before that, the regulations read, "In order to minimize the number of driveways along town roads, shared driveways shall be encouraged when deemed appropriate by the planning board for adjacent sites." So obviously, it's up to the board to decide, but I think this certainly meets that criteria. Number four, driveways shall conform to town standard entrance detail. Again, we will look at that and provide distances. That's a lot of the information in there right away. Section, number five, section 905, in regards to the amount of space in the one lot in... Joe, I'll really let Joe comment on that one. It's very hard. He's already basically kind of took a step back as to the value of this and what he could get out of the job. He's trying to simplify it. I think these are very nice lots. You can never predict what someone may or may not want to do with their own property. We have certainly provided nice building envelopes and everything in the front of these lots. And to have these be longer, wider ones like that versus one, are also more valuable. But certainly, Joe, if you want to comment?
Yes, Mr. Chin. Originally, we got a comment back from Dennis that just expressed his opinion that why couldn't I connect all the back land and possibly someone could use it as a hus farm? Well, that's just an opinion. There's nothing in the zoning that would require anyone to do that. And anyone would have to come to this board if for some reason they wanted to put a bridge or a wetland crossing to get him back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Number six, there's note 20, sheet 1, acceptable to the fire department. Again, I'll hand it over to Joe, but I do believe even on the prior applications, Joe did speak with the fire department and basically gave a verbal approval for sprinkler systems in the homes versus a system.
Yes, that would be his number one choice. Choice is to sprinkler the buildings. All of these buildings will be sprinkler.
So that's your plan, is to sprinkle?
Yes.
Item seven, the plan must show location and grading for mailbox turnout. Being this is not a road where the, or a proposal with a new road, I'm not exactly sure how that will, that will pan out. I guess we'll have to get a hold of them and see what they want to do. I know all the adjacent properties on the other side, they all have their normal mailboxes.
Right.
They may be restricted to one side, however.
The postal service is, is, I believe they've had some regulations in place for a while. They're starting to enforce them, though.
Yes, that's correct.
More stringently, to try to reduce the number of stops that the carriers need to make.
Yep.
I'm sure it's a cost-cutting activity, but nonetheless, it would be good for you to have something from them indicating that they're satisfied with whatever you're proposing.
Yes.
Something that we can have in the file.
Yep, I'll certainly look at that. I believe previously.
No, I just want to know if I can go back to number six just for a moment to see if your intention is to add a note in the plan that all the buildings will be sprinkled?
We can certainly do that.
Somebody there.
I thought it was. I thought it was.
It says all homes will be.
Yeah, note 20 says that.
Sheet 1, 3. Yeah. Fire suppression devices.
Well, if you prefer, we can say sprinkler system.
Which note is it?
Note 20.
20.
And it doesn't say sprinkler systems. It says each home will have a fire suppression. All homes to be built within this subdivision will be equipped with fire suppression devices approved by the fire department. I mean, I think that indicates sprinklers in about most of the two ways you could possibly do it.
Well, I mean, I suppose the fire department could approve a dry chemical kind of a system, possibly, but as long as it's with their approval.
It does indicate that each home will have one.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, again, with the postal service, we will do some homework on that. Lot numbers must be approved by the board of selectmen. Obviously, we have to make sure of that, but we'll certainly change that to alphabetic numbering. Yeah. What Dennis is referring to is we have this process where they come in with letters. Before we finalize the final my alarm, you talk with the assessor's office, and you find out what the actual tax map lot numbers would be, and then those are what are put on the final. So it morphs between your original application and that final. Item nine, denote which sheets are to be recorded. In stance, we will certainly have to do that. NHDOT and state subdivision permits are required. They are pending. Number 11, plan must comply with required monuments. All four corners and angle points of each lot must be monumented with concrete and granite. We will certainly relay that information to DUCET survey. Pipes set at 200-foot intervals along lot lines. But DUCET did want me to get a feeling from the board on the, as you can see, there are four lots with rather very long legs to them. Traditionally, when they're relatively straight without any bends in them, they try to stretch out the distances. Informally submit one, but we would like to ask the feeling of the board if they would go with a waiver to 400 or 500 feet between monuments only on the long, straight sections of the property lines.
You mean to waive the requirement for 200 feet?
Correct.
To something longer?
Yes. Being that they're long and straight.
We can get the sense from the board, but we don't have a written waiver to respond to at the moment, so.
Right.
I mean, we can have a discussion about it, and just take the temperature of the board if you'd like.
Okay, Mr. Chin.
How does the board feel about that request?
I'd be okay with it. The way he has it drawn out, I'd be okay with it.
As long as there's sections that don't have any angles on them.
Seems like he has every angle on it, the way the world has planned it.
Right.
So I think, I think also given the terrain out there, it's pretty flat to get those every 200 feet of wetlands.
Yeah, I'm likely similar end up. The 500 is basically, you know, end up being a issue.
Glenn, your feeling on this?
I understand the request. I, I like as clear monumentation as possible.
Oh, I, I agree. Dennis, thoughts?
I think that looking at the intent of the regulation, I think a lot of times the town has had problems with people approaching this property and not realizing it, and not knowing for sure where the property lines were. And I think that when it was discussed and coming up with the rules, they come up with 200 feet, because 200 feet you can see pretty good between 200 feet if it's not hilly or covered with shrubs or whatever. But 500 feet's quite a long ways. If it was barren land at 500 feet and flat, it probably wouldn't be a problem. If it's got a lot of brush and trees, it's pretty easy to get distracted, so it's really up to the board to guess. If it was my property, I would want to know where my property lines were.
You guys were okay with the proposal?
I asked, "2006, I was not monumentating at 200 feet." Run the straight lines to check.
So would you have been happier if it had them every 200 feet?
Depends on the style.
Okay, that's okay.
I used to look at it, and he, maybe if he runs at 200 feet, he's gonna have to run another 140 to make a corner. I mean, he's gonna have a lot more than every 200 feet just to show the contour of the lines. So when he's going straight line, it almost makes sense just to let him run, because he's highlighting the points of question. And I'm sure anybody that buys these lots of land will know their property. The points are right in the ground. And this is recorded, correct?
Yeah.
So all these marks are in the ground, they know where these are.
Well, how many times, though, do we have property owners come in, and even though there's a recorded plan, and they don't know what the hell is going on with the ground?
Previous application is an example of that very thing happening.
Exactly.
It adds up to 200 feet, but I personally, I don't like the idea of having to go every 500 feet when you get into the wetlands of the wetland buffer. To me, I mean, 200 feet, when it's wetlands and wetland buffer, but I don't mind the 200 feet prior to that.
200 to 500, there's gotta be a number in between that would address a few of those issues. Because I think it's only, it's two and a half times what we normally allow. And I get what Peter's saying, that it's a straight shot, you don't have to do it every 200, but going 200, 400, and then another 100 seems like, okay, that's, that's stretching the bounds a little bit. There's gotta be a good compromise number on a straight line that might be more reasonable.
We can hold it to 200 feet. We just wanted to ask the question.
Seems like there's a concern enough. We'll live with the 200 if the board prefers.
Okay, well, I mean, you brought it up, so we wanted to make sure, at least have the discussion.
Yep.
And it seems we do have a bit of a difference.
Our problem. We appreciate the concern. So lastly, item 12 through 13. Number 12, the applicant should explain the disclaimer in note 12. Unfortunately, I cannot do so. I am not a licensed surveyor, and that is not my plan. I can certainly try to get clarification for you in that, in writing, Dennis. Unfortunately, I can't answer that this evening.
But the board, it's necessarily to be, but I think it's...
Number 13, plan show an extensive trail system that extends to abutting properties and across the town line in Brentwood. Are they active, and do abutters have the rights for continued use? Should the plan specify continued use or not? I think anytime where the land now becomes private property, I would have to say not. I'll relay that to Joe.
Yeah, the title shows no one has deeded access. I'm told by the owners that they have allowed people to snowmobile verbally, but no one has any legal rights.
So there's, there's no deeded?
No.
Permission or access to do certain activities on that land?
Correct. And I'd just like to mention one other thing so that I don't forget. When we were going through the original hearing process, there was another abutte that had a swing set and some grass that extended. Well, at that time, because of the design, and we were trying to meet the requirements of a lot, I was unable to work with him, or I would have. Since then, I've called him and told him that I would give him a perpetual easement for where his lawn is that will self-extinguish when he sells his property, just so he can continue to cut his grass and stuff.
Sounds reasonable. And he was okay with that, I assume?
He was.
Thank you.
Yes, he is. Okay, good.
That's all I have for comments, Jim.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so you've addressed a lot of this stuff. I mean, there are a few things that need to be worked on. All right. I should probably take, before I open it for public comment, I should read the town department comments that we have on the plan. When we get these plan sets in, part of the reason for the multiple plan sets in advance is that they get distributed to town departments, and those departments have an opportunity to comment. And so we have a few here. First one on the top of the pile is from the Conservation Commission. It is dated February 10th. And it says, "The Conservation Commission only had a comment on one plan, the revision of the Foul Zone Plan," so I assume that means the subdivision part, not the... I assume that means the subdivision part, not the law line adjustment. It says, "Since, since no placements for buildings have been added to the plan at this time, the commission has no comment. However, it was noted that most of the land in lot 7-1 falls within the wetland buffer." I'm not sure I understand that. Commission finishes by saying, "Thanks," and FYI, I'm away for the week, February 8th. Okay. She's not able to be, just speaking in person.
easily be placed in that, the area.
Okay, all right. Okay, fire department, this was received on, well, I don't know exactly, but...
I think it was today.
Today. There are three bullet points. First one, all driveways comply with NFPA 1... First one, all driveways comply with NFPA 1, Chapter 18. I'm assuming that's a statement, that's not, it's not phrased as a question.
I believe that's a statement.
Okay.
Request.
Do you, do you think that they are in fact complying with NFPA?
I believe it's the same comment that Dennis is making in regards to the driveways.
Can I just, so there was, the town is requiring now that all driveway permits, even off of the state road, have a town driveway permit, because what we found is once you're 20 feet off the state highway, they don't care. You can do whatever you want. So the comments that have been brought up regarding the widths and, you know, turnarounds and things like that are basically the things we're looking for for the town driveway permit now.
Okay.
So obviously, you're waiting back from the state here on that, but if you coordinate with the road agent directly on this, and probably only have to get three driveway permits, because you have three driveways and branch off from there, but the thing we're looking for is just basically to have the road agent and the fire department there to make sure that you're adhering to all the NFPA regulations.
Okay, great.
So you may want to just touch base with them once you hear from the state on where exactly those placements are, and then he can give you more concrete information on that.
No, that's fine. Okay, the second bullet is comply with Kingston driveway ordinances. Technically, it's driveway regulations, I believe. Uh, and I don't know if, in this case, he's referring to width or to offset or, because it doesn't say.
I, I think he's making the assumption that they will comply with all of the standards found in the driveway.
Okay. And the third bullet, comply with fire protection regulations for subdivisions. And I think we've talked about that with regard to the sprinkling of buildings and that. So the next one is the health department, and Pete, the health officer is referring to page six. And it says, the proposed well, uh, assumes radii 75 feet protective radii, town of Kingston regulations, 100 feet. Lots show both, but legend shows 75 feet.
That's true. The legend, the legend does say 75 feet, but both are shown on each of the lots.
The, the inner circle, and that, that's why there are those two.
That's why there's basically two circles on each lot.
Okay.
I think Peter explained to me that he just wanted to point out that the legend's incorrect.
Yeah, I mean, the legend could clearly, it'd show all, since both are displayed.
Okay, but probably a good idea to do that. And the highway department also has three comments. The first one, no impact on town roads or drainage. And you've already addressed that, because this is on a state road. Number two, good plan, no new town roads. So the road agent is very happy about that. And number three, any driveway more than 150 feet in length must comply with NH, I'm sorry, NFPA 1, Section 18, unless the building has a code compliance sprinkler system. Detailed driveway plans must be submitted with application. And last but not least, is the building inspector, who has no comments, so.
If I may ask, I know some of them probably came in at late order today. If I could please receive copies?
Do I have your email address? Have we?
Yes.
Okay, does, before I open this for public comment, does the board have any immediate questions? All right, then, let's do public comment. Oh, well, we probably should deal with jurisdiction on this. We're, we're way down the pipe already, so we should probably deal with that. And Glenn, you've indicated that you think that we're, we're well within the framework of completeness.
Dennis, my good.
For jurisdiction purposes.
Make a motion, we have both jurisdiction.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Phil. And for folks in the audience who might be wondering what jurisdiction is, it, it means that the board considers the plan complete enough to take further action, to vote on it, and do any, anything else like that of an official nature, and also starts the, the state mandated 65-day time period in which the board has to, to make its decision. So it's not an approval of the plan, it's just an approval or an indication that the plan is complete enough to move forward. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous. Okay. All right, now, I'm gonna open it for public comment. If any, if there are abutters here or other interested parties to this application who wish to make a comment or ask a question, you could raise your hand, or you could stand and start moving forward, or, or, or not.
Or you could read the road.
So, there being no public comment, we will then close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. Let's say the board, at this point, questions, discussion.
And I'd, I'd like to, you know what, um, the general feeling the board is about these very long linear lots, and, um, I understand this, you know, how, how it works to make a conventional plan like this, but we've had some other instances where the town wasn't happy with the way, um, some, especially angled lots work downtown. So I didn't know if, uh, what the board's, I haven't been on the board since, since I've seen all these come through, and I was wondering what the, the board's experience on that is, whether they like that, or would prefer to see a conservative area in the back.
No, I, I think he tried. A couple of previous plans and hit obstructions, and now he's doing what he feels is the best use of his property that's legally allowed and appropriate through our zoning ordinances. I mean, he, he tried, he tried to make alternatives and got resistance from the Myers and other people with some of that shit, there were more open space preserved in the one section than those previous plans, and so I think he was kind of forced to this.
Right, I was wondering, I think the previous plan, if lots would be any more valuable, if people, any less valuable, let's say, if they were cut off at the, before the wetlands, because they obviously can't get out there and use that back part of the lot. It would allow one lot to be able to have, uh, a significant area that would be more than 10 acres that they could put in current use.
Mr. Falzone would probably like to sell you that, Pete, you wanna buy it?
Well, obviously, you'd have one of these, one of these existing house lots, and you'd have the advantage, that lot would be significantly more valuable, because it could have, I mean, oh, we'll have it or, you know, current use, um, on the significant portion.
Getting back there, so probably be one of the in-lots or.
I think there are lots like this throughout our community, in a number of subdivisions, and that there'd be no reason to make a change.
Okay.
And it complies with the regulations, sir.
I, I also think what you're seeing on the plan and what is actually on the ground are two very different things. That it's not conducive to much other than raising frogs. I mean, for the most part, it's pretty wet back there, there's a beaver dam that's flooding most of that property out. It's.
Talking about the area around the wetlands, yes.
Mr. Falzone, it sounded, looked like you might want to make a comment, but.
I, I do a lot of cluster subdivisions. This is the first town that I've come into that has a regulation that says you have to have a 200-foot buffer along an existing roadway. And when we came in to try to do the open space plan, and we abided by the 200 feet, then the engineering comments, based upon what your regulation says, um, you couldn't do the drainage, which is part of the roadway.
Right.
And, uh, you know, there was a comment made that to push it back 200 feet. You can't, you can't do it. If, if you really want this type of use, you should adjust the zoning, because if had, if it had been 100 feet, we, you know, we could have made it work, but we couldn't put a detention pond, or we were told we couldn't put a detention pond, which takes the water from the roadway that's associated with the road, within the 200-foot buffer. Makes no sense, for whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's a moot point right now, but I'm just curious, you, you decided that you didn't want to challenge it by going for variance?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't like to go into surgery if I don't have to.
Well, I understand. I've just, because I, I think that, I, I for one would have really preferred the conservation subdivision, the, the innovative design. I mean, I think it was a nice plan.
I mean, I.
And I understand, I understand why you're not doing it.
I spent $25,000 on the hydro geological study that now isn't even required for seven lots.
Right.
So it's not really a good feeling.
I understand.
And the comments that are in front of us now, these are minor.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, so the lots are, um, you know, we don't have, we don't have odd, you know, angles and dog legs and stuff, which, which, which the town's regulations, uh, address. I mean, these are reasonably parallel. Uh, I mean, the, the lots do angle, but they follow the, they follow the, the, the lot line on the north side, if you will. They sort of come in like that. But, anyway. And they do come reasonably perpendicular to the road once they reach the, once they reach the frontage. Okay. How did we start on that part of the discussion?
Oh, I asked what the board's consensus was, and, yeah, thank you.
I got it.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, we've, the discussion we had regarding monumentation, the 200 feet, the applicant said they're just gonna follow the regulations for that, so we don't need to discuss that any further. What other outstanding items were there?
Do we need to make a motion on the dryways?
The shared dryways, yes. Yeah. Yeah, because it's in the board's, it's in the board's purview to, to do that, so. So there are, there's one triple.
Correct. Two doubles.
Two doubles. And the one triple is serving five, six, and seven?
That's correct.
Yes. And as an added note on that one, uh, that one being the one additional versus the other two, that one utilizes the existing gravel driveway as it stands today.
Oh.
So there's no real big difference.
Oh, there's the, there's the outline of the old house.
Yes, we tried to hold that as, it's a, it's an historic driveway location, and it will now just, instead of one, serve three.
I make a motion to accept the proposed driveway scheme of two doubles and one triple in the interest of minimizing driveway intrusions onto a public driveway. Second.
Okay, motion by Phil, second by, who went first?
Maybe one. Is, I don't think we need to say it, but, um, that would waive the 20-foot setback apartments, obviously, for shared driveway, because if they're on property.
Well, on, on the ones that are on property line, yes, it, it doesn't apply to the triple.
Right. Where they cross.
Because that's in the middle of.
But they cross, they cross the first bit.
Well, yeah.
So.
I guess it's.
Has it stated that, that, uh, that any waivers of the 20-foot setback being here?
I mean, it can be stated as part of the motion, but the, the motion was referring to the plan.
Right.
And, but, but certainly, certainly would be heard to clarify that that motion does include the.
Waiving the 20-foot setback driveway.
The waiving of, of the 20-foot setback requirement where, where it comes into play.
So amended.
Yep, you'd be good with that, Peter?
Okay. What?
Are you okay?
Uh.
And we waived the 20-foot.
Exactly.
Where?
The 20-foot setback requirements on those.
On those lots affected. As shown on the plan dated.
January 20.
January 20, I believe, right?
January 20.
On, on that sheet, on that particular sheet that shows that, the date on that sheet is actually December 30, 2019.
Well, the dates on the individual sheets are one thing, but then there's a date on the outside sheet for the whole plan set. So.
This is the individual.
So the individual sheet, well, because the whole plan set is January 2020, the.
The plan sheet that shows the driveways.
What is the date on that?
It's actually December 30, 2019.
December 30, 2019.
Page 8, remember?
It is.
If I may, the actual highway access plans that are more detailed.
Are January 20.
The ones in the back, the plan's at 8.
Someone tell me the date, that they're all these minutes. I keep hearing them go back and forth. You want the date still?
Sheet 6 of 9, and January 20.
Where do you get sheet 6 of 9, Peter?
Uh, it says, sheet 6 of 9, January 2020, shows the goal areas, um, so it's 4,000 foot receiving areas, and it shows the driveway. Um, and that's the one, you say it's the most current, oh, and you propose it to the DOD.
No, no, this one.
Had the specific details for them, yeah.
Can you just tell me the lots that these are affected, and go that way? That's my question.
Okay, so that's sheet 7.
Great, then.
Well, the, the triple affects five, six, seven, five, six, and seven.
The double's one and two.
Right.
And sheet 7 of 9. Date January 20. Okay, because I have sheet 6 of 9 dated December 30, 2019. On sheet 7 of 9, and it's dated January 20.
That's the highway access plan with the driveways.
Okay, so we're not having 6 of 9, December 30.
Lost her.
There's 7.
7 made of the number 1.
On sheet 7, 8, 9?
7, 8, 9.
7. 7, 8, 9, 9. Okay, so sheet 7, 8, and 9 dated January 2020. Yes. And we're not doing the, 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 the. Is that right? No, I have a question. Does this have to be pending state approval, or just a theory?
No, pending state approval.
Should it say that in motion, or does it not need to?
No.
Yep.
Okay.
I have one question.
I thought you were gonna be a slack guy.
No, no, this is a question, this is a question.
Say it back.
And I apologize if I didn't understand this, but I used, this is the second time I've had a issue with this. Um, uh, note 8 on Glenn talks about the plan should include in no detailing the existing Note aid on Glenn talks about the plan should include in no detailing the existing and anticipated impervious area in square feet and the percentage of the total lot. Can we finish? I'm sorry. Can we finish the-- I thought we were getting the first--
Just hold that.
All right. We're still in further discussion on the motion regarding the shared driveway. And we've added an additional amendment to indicate that this, of course, is pending state driveway, state DOT. Was there anything else?
And that we allow within 20 feet of progress.
Yeah, she waived the 20-foot setback. You allowed the two doubles and one triple. And you waived the 20-foot setbacks, and those lots affected as shown on the plan set dated January 2020 on sheet 7, 8, and 9 of 9 pending state approval. Yes? So that was the only-- Well, so everyone made the motion.
Well, who made it? Because you did.
So we're on-- So it's still--
Okay. Anything else on this one? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous. Here. So the question on the impervious, what that was requiring on-- should that be noted as the maximum amount allowed on the lot? Because how do we know what's going to be on-- we're requesting him to say something. I mean, he doesn't know he's going to build all that yet. So how is he supposed to come up with that answer? Until he has a building permit, then I'm sure it's going to be on that. Look for the board on the full request, and I don't see how he can tell us what the impervious area is going to be.
Are you looking for just a note stating what the max impervious--
Maybe it would be a note. I mean, that's a very large lot, so maybe, hey, listen, somebody-- I mean, you could have this much impervious area, but I mean, how's the applicant going to supply us with that information? He's got no idea he's going to build on it yet. I think that would be on the building permit. That'd be on note aid on Glenn's. Who's on Glenn's? Yeah, and note aid.
I think that's based on the town's department provided in what MS--
Yeah, that's part of the subdivision regulations that we put in place so that we would be able to track what the impervious coverage is in town if we were ever asked that specifically by EPA.
But shouldn't that be tracked by the building inspector then?
That's what I'm thinking. How is the applicant--
Because we don't know what the impervious surface is going to be and won't know--
We ask them to estimate-- an estimated size of the house and the estimated length of driveway. I mean, those are the two impervious surfaces that are created in subdivision. We get the same requirement in site plan, but that's something that--
But it's--
--is a little bit more structured in when they come to us, they show us what their paid parking area is going to be and the size of their buildings.
But isn't in our same laws, they say a certain house lot is allowed a certain percentage of impervious surface?
Only if it's in the option protection zone, and this one happens. Yes.
Just it is.
So we-- Just to simple calculate, we can tell what the impervious numbers would be.
Right. If they do that, that doesn't give us the information that we would need if EPA ever asks us for.
But if EPA asks us for it, what we're giving them is guesses. We're not giving them the actual--
Right. Giving them guesses anyway.
They don't expect us to give guesses. I mean, I understand the question, and I understand that we always ask them to estimate. Having some information is better than having no information.
But they have real information if it happened at the time of the building permit.
Right.
They know what the driveways are going to be, they know what the house, the building sizes are going to be, and they have actual real information and not a guess.
He gives us--
Just applying continuous guesses.
We keep monitoring.
Doing it if we just-- we can remove that from the subdivision regulations.
I'm just saying, I agree with Peter.
And ask that it be put on the building permit. That, I have no problem with doing that. We put it in subdivision because we put a direct corresponding one at the same time in site plan. And in site plan, when they come to the planning board, the information is more precise than with subdivision.
So that wouldn't limit the applicant involved, said they want to put on a binder? Because now he's got more impervious area, which registered now in the site plan. Now it's going to be different?
No. With it in that subdivision--
Correct. In this plan right here, if he says, "I'm going to build 20,000 impervious square feet," now suddenly wants to put on a binder, sorry, you can't, because the plan says you only can say 20,000 square feet. That's what's recorded. We're recording something that he's saying he's going to do.
Well, yeah, but we don't limit-- we don't use the subdivision plan to limit residential building permits. That process goes on regardless. You can build another structure without it being shown on the subdivision plan.
I think it should go to the building department.
I think--
But I think-- I agree that you would get a better, more definitive number if it was a requirement of the building permit.
But I do think we're off topic from this for tonight, but I think we should-- I think we should put that--
I just brought it forward.
It's something--
It was on our client, that's why I asked.
Certainly something for us to work on in the next couple of months, as well as want to thank Mr. Belzum for his comments.
Yeah.
Because another developer gave us comments about a year or so ago, and we really took those to heart and made changes. Because sometimes until something comes forward, we don't understand the real impact and whether it's serious or not serious. So it's helpful to us as we begin working on our zoning requirements. So thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. So the end result of this conversation is that-- any changes on this plan? Is that where we're at?
Most of these comments and changes are going to be notations on the plans. And I'm just wondering, only because we've been here a few times, will it be possible to grant the conditional approval, providing that we've agreed to all these changes on the plans that will get reviewed?
Well, that's something that we're getting around to discussing, if that's the board's pleasure at this point, or if they feel that-- if they feel that the outstanding information is something that they would prefer to-- to see before they do the-- before they do the approval. So it's up to the board, and that's-- we're at that point.
Thank you.
Close them.
Fairer for the question to the-- the functional value showing an 85-foot buffer, and I just don't want to forget that there are some things that may be placement issues on the floor. And also to remind you that it'll be two weeks. So that everything could be addressed, and it would just be two weeks, not a month.
That would be great. Thank you. Two weeks is fine.
It's up to the board, but I just-- it seemed to me there were a couple of items that could be placement issues, that if there were still concerns, that means you'd have to start all over again, which I know you don't want to do, which would be that if you get the plan adjusted appropriately, what is being two weeks?
How much that time does that give them to deliver their plan sets?
Well, it's up to the board to decide. Any of the things that have to go to plan sets involved upon the bid, or any of the guns and blood.
I don't think we have to really require-- advance on this as long as one and-- and Dennis get them. There weren't enough comments of any depth from the departments. So certainly, you know, we don't need to have the plan sets in two days. There are three days, I think, certainly.
Obviously, things like the DOT permit are-- you know, those are conditions anyway, and those will be--
Right.
It will happen when it happens. We would want you to have some response from the postal service, though.
Okay.
By the time-- by the time, if the board chooses to see you again, I think we would want to see that.
So if Mr. Belzum is the applicant, is comfortable coming back in two weeks, I think it'd be nicer to just have some of these things kind of cleaned up, so if we do issue a conditional, you know, conditional on it, that less conditions with it.
Can the engineering-- can you back up?
Yep.
Then I make a motion this hearing be continued until March 3? Do you think you'd get the plan sets in by the 30th? Oh, no, excuse me, the 27th? Is that too far off?
No, that should be fine.
With the plans due to the planning board office by noon on February 27?
Second?
All right, motion by Lynn, second by Chris. To continue this hearing to March 3 with revised plans due in planning board office by February 27. Further discussion from the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So that's unanimous. So we will see you in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, we can get, you know, most, if not all, of this stuff wrapped up, the plans, you know, cleaned up. Should be pretty good to go with that.
Give you time, Seavey.
Thank you.
You guys get the plan sets for here?
Charlie, do you need to send anything? Oh, you've already done--
Did you do anything? Because I said something-- Does everyone still have plan copies? These are-- we submitted originally, so if you'd watch the copy--
Did you bring copies, Charlie?
Yes.
Nothing changed. Does anyone need a plan for this? Glenn, you have one?
I think before Charlie said stop.
Okay. All right. So we have our next hearing. We're beginning this one at 8:15. It's for Brezner and Moving against Courage at Two Marshall Road, tax map R41, lot 7-2. The applicant has submitted an amended site plan seeking approval for revisions to the previously approved site plan in regard to buffering and landscaping. So I know that we-- I think we were scheduled for this last month, and we got a request to continue it, so this is continuing.
Yeah, we introduced the plan in December, site walk the 5th of January, and continued the January meeting tonight.
Okay. So why don't we do what we normally do and turn it to the applicant to address us with any information that you'd like to share?
Sure. For the record, Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates. With me is the owner, Joe Brezner, and his counsel, Joe McKittrick. Joe was not here for the December hearing when we introduced the plan, but he was with us at the site walk, so he's been brought up to speed with everything. As you know, there's been an overcut on the property. What we proposed is a plan to basically revegetate some areas in lieu of the cutting. And what we had proposed was-- it initially started off as an enforcement action, and we were working with the selectmen on it, had a couple of site walks and a couple of meetings with them. Eventually came up with basically the plan that was presented to this board. They were amenable to it. There was four selectmen that voted. They accepted that plan. And then asked that we amend our site plan and come back here looking for this board's approval. As you know, at that December hearing, there was much discussion as to what we were proposing and whether or not that was sufficient for the overcut and restoration of the buffer areas. So we had a site walk in which we engaged Greg Jordan, the forester, as well as Mike Como, who happens to be with us here tonight, and had some discussion, introduced those gentlemen to the site conditions, and then they forwarded their reports to the board. I have had a chance to review both reports, both from Greg and both from Mike, and we've kind of had gone through it. We're amenable to some of the suggestions here. I don't know if the board wants to discuss these letters. They're slightly different opinions. I think maybe that I would let the board discuss, and then we can kind of kick it back this way, if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I think that the board has had a chance to see both of those reports. I think that they were supplied to the board by email. We did invite both Mr. Jordan and Mr. Como to be here at the meeting, and I know at the last meeting, one of-- Mr. Jordan said he couldn't be here, but I think he indicated that he could be here tonight, and he's not.
No, he's not.
And we thought that it was important to invite both of them, particularly because their perceptions and their recommendations were very different. Thought that it would be helpful to the board, especially if we were going to get into questions and discussion, but to have them both here. But in fact, we have one, so-- So I'm not quite sure how to proceed with this, because we do have Mr. Como here. I think at the very least, it would be good for us to hear his verbal discussion of what his letter said. And we can certainly go through both of the--
Yeah, neither one of them are very long.
Right. Right. So Glenn, do you have a suggestion on this?
I think it would be excellent to hear from Mr. Como.
Okay. Is the board good with that? It's for Brezner and Moving and Storage at Two Marshall Road, Tax map R41 lot 7-2. The applicant has submitted an amended site plan seeking approval for revisions to the previously approved site plan in regard to buffering and landscaping. So I know that we, I think we were scheduled for this last month and we had a request to continue it, so this is continuing.
Yeah, we introduced the plan in December, site walk the 5th of January, and continued the January meeting tonight.
Okay. So why don't we do what we normally do and turn it to the applicant to address us with any information that you'd like to share?
For the record, Charlie Zilch from SEC and Associates. With me is the owner, Joe Brezner and his counsel, Joe McKittrick. Joe was not here for the December hearing when we introduced the plan, but he was with us at the site walk, so he's been brought up to speed with everything. As you know, there's been an overcut on the property. What we proposed is a plan to basically revegetate some areas in lieu of the cutting. And what we had proposed was, it initially started off as an enforcement action, and we were working with the selectmen on it, had a couple of site walks and a couple of meetings with them. Eventually came up with basically the plan that were presented to this board. They were amenable to it. There was four selectmen that voted. They accepted that plan. And then asked that we amend our site plan and come back here looking for this board's approval. As you know, at that December hearing, there was much discussion as to what we were proposing and whether or not that was sufficient for the overcut and restoration of the buffer areas. So we had a site walk in which we engaged Greg Jordan, the forester, as well as Mike Cuomo, who happens to be with us here tonight, and had some discussion, introduced those gentlemen to the site conditions, and then they forwarded their reports to the board. I have had a chance to review both reports, both from Greg and both from Mike, and we've kind of had gone through it. We're amenable to some of the suggestions here. I don't know if the board wants to discuss these letters, they're slightly different opinions. I think maybe that I would let the board discuss, and then we can kind of kick it back this way if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I think that the board has had a chance to see both of those reports. I think that they were supplied to the board by email. We did invite both Mr. Jordan and Mr. Cuomo to be here at the meeting, and I know at the last meeting, one of, Mr. Jordan said he couldn't be here, but I think he indicated that he could be here tonight, and he's not.
No, he's not.
And we thought that it was important to invite both of them, particularly because their perceptions and their recommendations were very different. Thought that it would be helpful to the board, especially if we were going to get into questions and discussion, but to have them both here. But in fact, we have one, so. So I'm not quite sure how to proceed with this, because we do have Mr. Cuomo here. I think at the very least, it would be good for us to hear his verbal discussion of what his letter said. And we can certainly go through both of the...
Yeah, neither one of them are very long.
Right. Right. So Glenn, do you have a suggestion on this?
I think it would be excellent to hear from Mr. Cuomo.
Okay. Is the board good with that? Or does the board want to have some discussion first? Mr. Brezner?
Good. He's just making a corner of me, Mr. Jim.
Well, it looked as though he raised his hand and looked at me, I thought he was...
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think he was picking up the water at the same time he was talking to me.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right, well, without objection then, if we could ask Mr. Cuomo to, maybe Glenn, could he sit beside you there? There's a seat and there's a...
Is that mine?
It is.
You can stand.
Okay.
Mike Cuomo, soil scientist and wetland scientist for Rockingham County Conservation District.
You might want to get a little bit closer.
Mike Cuomo, a soil scientist and wetland scientist for Rockingham County Conservation District, was invited to join the planning board and others on a site walk on this particular property to review overcutting that occurred in the buffers around vernal pools on a previously approved site plan.
I wrote a letter dated January 9th, which has been provided to the board and the applicant, and I'll summarize the points in the letter. As pointed out in paragraph number two, the planning board allowed the applicant to encroach on the 100-foot vernal pool buffers to a limited degree to access the northern half of the property, to construct the wet ponds and infiltration basins, and to create grassed areas. We've been provided with an amended plan that showed the additional encroachment where trees were cut and shrubs and under story disturbed. The applicant is responsible for that work. The applicant has pointed out that that was done by a subcontractor, but from the planning board's perspective, the applicant is before the planning board and they're responsible for the work that their subcontractors do. In response to the vernal pool buffer violations, the applicant has proposed planting saplings, 112 saplings, and to allow the understory and unplanted areas to revegetate naturally. My opinion, it's inadequate to restore the environmental function of the vernal pool buffers if one allows the understory to revegetate naturally and only plants these saplings. Majority of the proposed saplings are not in the vernal pool buffers which were disturbed, and those saplings are being proposed for landscaping unrelated to the buffer violation. The applicant proposes these saplings will act as a buffer from additional violations in the future, and I disagree with that argument. This argument was made verbally at the time of the site walk. Natural vegetation is not adequate for restoration approach for vernal pool buffers because undesirable invasive plants can establish themselves in areas that have been logged. Invasive plants by their definition outcompete native plants, it's for native animal species. Invasive plants grow quickly in recently logged areas, and planting native shrubs to revegetate those areas gives the preferred vegetation a better advantage over the seed bank of invasive plants that occurs naturally. The sapling sizes proposed are quite small and do not provide adequate shading to replace the trees that are lost, to shade out the invasive plants that are shade intolerant and provide wildlife habitat advantages, excuse me, wildlife habitat opportunities for the vernal pool species. During the site walk, the applicant argued that planting additional saplings beyond those proposed in the amended site plan would cause unnecessary disturbance in the vernal pool buffer. My counterargument is the disturbance caused by the plantings that I suggest the planning board recommend or require will be less than the disturbance caused by the logging, and will be a temporary, short-term effect, as opposed to the logging which has a longer-term effect. I close my letter with a series of recommendations, which is that the planning board require buffer restoration plan prepared by a certified wetland scientist or certified wildlife biologist, that the environmental professional prepares that plan, inspects the plantings and certifies to the planning board when the restoration is complete, a full inspection be done approximately a year after the initial inspection to ensure that at least 75% of the plantings survive, and that then a report be sent to the planning board to indicate that the restoration is successful as defined here, or recommends remedial action to make that restoration Okay. Well, while you're standing there, let's see if the board has any specific questions, and then we can go from there.
I have not.
Oh. Maybe you could take a minute to have him read that letter? We're gonna, we're gonna read that. Okay. Have you... I mean, I would have asked him to read it had he been here, but...
Yeah.
So, and because they are significantly different, we want both of them to be read.
I believe I was provided with that letter, so I'm not faulting the board or that, or Mr. Jordan for not providing that letter to me.
Oh, hold it.
Okay. That comment?
I'm sorry?
I believe I was provided with that letter.
Yep.
So I'm not faulting Mr. Jordan or others for not providing that letter to me. It just didn't happen. The reading.
Oh, the reading part didn't...
The reading part didn't happen. I was provided with the letter.
Got it.
My recollection is it came across my desk, and I can't remember what happened after that, but it did not get read. I apologize. No disrespect was meant by that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Cuomo. All right, so the other gentleman who was with us on the site walk was Greg Jordan. He's the county forester for Rockingham County, works out of Brentwood office for the Cooperative Extension Service. He likewise did a letter to the board dated January 10th, and it's actually addressed to our town planner as the representative of the planning board. And it reads, "Thank you for inviting me to the site walk at property owned by Brezner and Moving and Storage Company, tax map R41 lot 17-2, on the morning of January 5. It was a pleasure meeting with you, members of the planning board and Conservation Commission, Mike Cuomo, RCCD, Charles Zilch, the applicant, and one of the property abutters. The purpose of the meeting was to inspect areas of overcut per SEC and Associates Inc. amended plan, and refers to the October 29, 2019, plan, and to determine if any actions are needed to restore the previously approved wetland/vernal pool buffers. Based on the amended site plan, I estimate the four areas of overcut surrounding the property's vernal pools to total approximately 2.5 plus or minus acres. In some areas, the forested buffer with mature trees providing a closed forest canopy was reduced to as little as 30 feet. Maintaining buffers around vernal pools helps to provide shade, deep leaf litter, and woody debris that is important for healthy amphibian reptile and invertebrate populations. In addition, because mole salamanders, and it gives the species, spend most of the year, 11-plus months underground in the uplands surrounding vernal pools, disturbance to the forest floor should be minimized. Loose, uncompacted soil is ideal. Although overstoryed trees were removed from the wetland/vernal pool buffers, it appears that the forest floor, and in parentheses, stumps woody debris and leaf litter, closed parentheses, remains largely undisturbed. Native vegetation, especially stump sprouts, should quickly revegetate the buffer areas. In addition, success of planted trees and shrubs in those areas would be hampered by severe competition with existing vegetation. Therefore, I recommend allowing the overcut buffer areas to revegetate naturally and to avoid additional disturbance to the soil through planting operations. Instead, I suggest concentrating efforts on successfully establishing the proposed buffer zone plantings. Per the amended site plan, this will consist of two separate areas of 50 trees each. In addition, the applicant proposes planting 12 white pine and spruce trees as a visual screen along the western property boundary. Due to the site's droughty, windsor, and deer field soils, proper mulching and supplemental irrigation is needed until the newly planted trees are well-established, two plus years, two plus or minus years. I suggest using a product such as TreeGator Junior Pro Slow Release Water Bag for each During dry periods, each watering bag must be refilled every five to seven days. In addition, no... To help improve the likelihood of successfully establishing the plantings, species must be carefully chosen. Plantings must be tolerant of the site's droughty soils and resistant to deer browsing. Generally, native plants are the best choice. In a natural state, I would expect the site to support an Appalachian oak and pine forest. Typical species composition includes oaks, red, black, and white, pines, white, pitch, and red, red maple, American beech, and paper birch. Younger stands might include gray birch or eastern red cedar. Because of the recent and land clearing operations, the site is exposed to full sun. Therefore, for the buffer zone, I suggest planting 20 each of eastern white pine, pitch pine, eastern red cedar, gray birch, and white oak. If the contractor has difficulty obtaining any of these species, acceptable alternatives include red oak, paper birch, red maple, or sassafras. For the visual screen plantings along the western property boundary, good choices include eastern white pine, Norway spruce, and/or concolor fir. Concolor fir is also known as white fir. Although the ecology of the site has been significantly altered as a result of the development activity, there may be potential for vernal pools, especially ponds 1, 2, and 3, to provide breeding habitat in the future. Although it is not clear how the hydrology of each vernal pool has changed, maintaining upland buffers remains important. Sincerely, Greg Jordan, Rockingham County Forest. All right. So what's the, what are the thoughts of the board on this? I mean, we asked, we asked the two experts to join us on the site walk, they did, they both provided us with their feedback and their thoughts, and they are different, so...
May I? Before you go into discussion, we have had a chance to talk this over with Joe, and we're in line with adopting everything as recommended in the forester's letter, particularly the types of trees, the maintenance program, et cetera. So if that's, I mean, that's what we'd like to see it go. That's what we'd like to put into action, is basically take his recommendations and apply it to our site plan, and Joe's willing to do that.
So my personal opinion is, we have, I know, we've done, we've had enforcement issues in the past where people have deviated from site plans, and some of them in the past have been absolute flagrant disregard for site plans, where they've said, oh, they just kind of beg for forgiveness instead of ask for permission. And from everything I've heard and seen regarding this, I don't think that's the case with us. Ultimately, yes, the applicant is responsible for the site plan, but they were responsive. They came here, that obviously we have two differing opinions on experts, but we also have a plan that's been presented to whom is the enforcement arm of the town, and it would seem to be reasonable by the board of selectmen as well. And from what I see, you know, nothing's going to undo what happened, and that's unfortunate. But I see a plan that seems very reasonable, is at least supported by one expert. I know they have different opinions, but I don't think running them through the gambit of trying to create more additional tests and scientists and plans and things, I think it's going to be unreasonable, and where we already have the support of the enforcement authority of this board, which would be the board of the selectmen, and I think we have a plan that at least satisfies one expert.
I think there has to be a little bit more of a follow-up discussion than discussed in Jordan's letter. The, I think there's a lot of similarities. For example, the forester concentration on the species, as Mike had said that that was something that he threw to him. I think the one area of disagreement is whether going in and regenerating the buffer zones in order to get the preferred species in. They both agree that native species should be there to regenerate. I know that when you have a third gun, you're more likely to get the species you don't want coming in to a forest that peach comes in instead of the oak and other things that you're looking for, and so there has to be some kind of monitoring that we're going to install in this, so that we can come back in a year, or whatever the recommendations are, find out what the survival rate is, how the trees are handling it, whether there's any competition for native species coming in, invasive coming in, and quite frankly, what size of saplings to put in so that you can establish that story, you know, sooner before the vernal pool is no longer able to recover. So I think a hybrid approach would be good with taking the foresters' recommendations of species, and perhaps we could have a discussion, Mike to Mike, about what he feels about the soil disturbance issue, because, you know, that would be something that... I would be interested in hearing how he feels about Greg's interpretation of the soil disturbance, whether that would be detrimental to go in and plant more trees in there, or not. And there are, you know, there are a number of saplings they're talking about putting in here, but what was your idea on the size of the saplings, for example?
Mike Cuomo, I didn't have specific recommendations on the size of the saplings.
Okay.
My understanding from Mr. Jordan's letter is he's recommending plantings in the buffer, and he has specific species that he feels are... And he has specific species that he feels are appropriate for the soils, and in reflection of what the, the trees were previously, what trees were previously there. Yes?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, he's listed quite few.
Yep, that's good. I think the primary thing we disagree on is the understory, whether their, whether natural revegetation is going to be allowed to occur, or whether we're going to plant understory plants in addition to trees in order to try to create or jumpstart a particular suite of vegetation that would be beneficial to the wildlife and to the vernal pool. So I think that, that's really the, the bigger disagreement between us. And Mr. Jordan did not discuss how this would be monitored or any follow-up. So I see that as the primary differences between our two recommendations.
Right, and that's where I felt a hybrid. Wait, you're going to go for something?
No. But I, I think this plan is a bit of a hybrid to begin with. It's, it's, we're proposing two fairly long lines of, of tree plantings, each one about 100 some odd feet long, and a good portion of each one of those lines is within a buffer, 100-foot buffer around vernal pool that's been disturbed. So as you can see from the plan on the one that runs east to west, basically is all within that 100-foot buffer of vernal pool number three, and then vernal pool number, I think it's four. You can see there's another section of, that's the section that runs parallel 125.
Yeah, I think the concern was, when we were on site, is that none of those plantings occurred on the south side, which is the sunny side of the, of the cuts, which is where they, where it came quite close to the vernal pools. We were standing here and looking at that as, you know, there's virtually no protection there anymore for the, for the pools. And there's no planting shown on, around either of these vernal pools on the sunny side, on the south side. And none are shown around vernal pool one. And I, I think that the visual, there are a lot of plantings shown for the visual. There's two different issues. One was the, you know, removal of the neighbor's buffer, visual buffer. And that, there was a mixed effort, and a type of discussion about how to plant, to try to restore some of that. And then there's the vernal pool buffers that were cut down.
Well, the other benefit of what we're proposing too is that the limited disturbance that's already been established on the site, there's no need to disturb the site in further, especially to complete the second phase of this project, or the third phase, rather, the norley phase. So with that line of trees that we're proposing, those buffer lines, they're right at the edge of that disturbance into the buffer areas. So not only is it a visual buffer, but it also is a physical buffer, with no additional disturbance in those areas. So for them to be able to revegetate themselves, there's, there's a, a nice line of trees of protection on both of those areas to protect that. So for revegetation, I think it's an, the optimal plan here.
You're saying none of the plantings are in the area of disturbance around vernal pools. You got this one that's over here. So the question is, um...
Again, though, there's, there's two different opinions of whether or not plantings within those buffers, it would be of benefit or be detrimental to the, to the understory area.
But he's talking, he being Greg, is already talking about suggesting planting 20 each of the eastern white pine, pitch pine, and red, eastern red cedar, and white oak, so forth, in the buffer zones, he's talking about the vernal pool buffers, because later he says for the visual screen plantings along the western boundary, could traces included many of this exposed. So I don't, I don't necessarily see those.
Well, what he's referring to, when he calls them buffer zones, he's referring to the two tree lines that we show on the plan. If you go back to the first page, he said, "Per the amended site plan, this will consist of two separate areas of 50 trees each." So he's referring to that, and his suggestion for those five different species of 20 each equates to 100 trees. Those are the two sections of 50-foot trees. So he's suggesting that we implement this plan with those trees. That's my understanding of it.
Several people who want to speak, yeah, Ellen and Phil, and I know Mr. Komol just raised his hand as well, but...
I just, upon reading these, we have one gentleman who's a forester, and we have one gentleman who's a certified woodland scientist and soil scientist, I believe. I don't know why the board thinks this has to be an either-or proposition, because it sounds like the gentleman whose expertise is in trees has given a clear indication of what he thinks should happen. He has an opinion of what he thinks might happen to trying to certain things within the vernal pool buffer, but that's not his area of expertise, that's that gentleman's area of expertise. And that gentleman thinks that some of the plantings that should occur, again, reading is quickly forgiven by some language, but it sounds, talking about shrubs, native shrubs being planted and things, which helps with that understory, if you will, of the shading to protect the vernal pool. I don't see why both can't be done. One gentleman, I think we should go with the gentleman who, his expertise is forestry, on what he's saying about the trees, but I don't think we should discount this gentleman's expertise when it comes to how we best protect the vernal pool for the benefit of the town. So I think that you could take the best of both plans to come up with a plan that would best protect the interests of the town for all of this. I, I get that the forester thinks that adding more trees might be impacted, but I also know that when you clear certain things, you don't necessarily get the things you want back. It's noninvasive plants that extend its age to just take over, and that's not going to be beneficial, whereas I don't think he's asking for anything majorly unreasonable when it comes to protecting the vernal pools. Well, the forester is asking for anything unreasonable when it comes to what the trees should be for the plantings in the buffers. So I don't see why it has to be an either-or situation.
Mr. Komol, maybe now, I know you had your hand raised, but now there, there have been some specific comments. Maybe you could respond to those, and then I know Phil has some comments.
Sure, thank you. Respectfully to my friend Charlie Zilch, I don't think that Mr. Jordan's letter endorsed the plan that was presented by the applicant. That was not my understanding from what was just read. I believe he had a different, Mr. Jordan has a different concept of what should be done to address this. So I would argue that neither of the experts which the planning board engaged endorsed the plan that was submitted by the applicant for the restoration of the vernal pool buffer. Vernal pool buffers are important. The town has made that decision. That's why we have the vernal pool buffers. There was an encroachment. There needs to be a restoration. The details of that restoration vary between our recommendations, but I think that both of us do not believe that the plan presented is adequate as is.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Faulkner has a suggestion. I'm sorry. Go, continue. I think that we could, I would certainly be willing to allow, well, the planning board gets to make the decision. They get to, you, you choose. If you wish, I could work with Mr. Jordan, and we could come up with a modification of our recommendations and sort of blend the two better, to meet somewhere in the middle, if you, if you see them as two extremes. I think it's kind of actually nice, planning board heard two different opinions that were different. Those are our professional opinions. We do come at this from different perspectives, and maybe somewhere in the middle is where we need to meet in order to address this. But that's my opinion. Thank you. Hang on. Mr. McKeever?
May I, may I address the, the comments made by a member of the board? In my field, it's not unusual to have experts disagree. That's what they do all the time. I'd like to remind the board that this is almost March, and this has been going on for a while, to no fault of the board, but it's been going on for a while, and springtime is coming. If we looked at Mr. Komol's plan by hiring another expert to do another plan, we won't be planting trees in May. Those vernal pools won't be protected in May or June. We'll be back in September and October arguing about a third expert, a third plan. I would like to suggest that, that what the forester is saying is that will, as we said it before, nothing's going to replace or put back what we had before. That's a given. But what the forester is suggesting, based on his understanding of how trees grow in this area, and the types of trees that grow, to plant these trees, there can be slight, some slight modification about where they are to be placed, but what he suggested that we move forward with that. If you want to know how loose that soil is, you're not going to find it in February, you're not going to find it in March, you're going to have to wait until May. So I think it's important for this board, especially given the leanings of the Board of Selectmen, when they turn this back to you, indicating that they, they were in favor of this plan or some modification of it, not to let this go further, but to make a decision tonight as to what, as to what is needed for this and be done with it. And be done with it, I don't mean in a negative way, but, but have a fixed plan so that everybody can move forward and resolve this problem.
With all due respect, before I let the Selectmen speak, they recognize that it was not their decision to make, which is why it's back here. So...
I would point out further that the main thing that the Selectmen were looking at was the vast majority of trees that were missing from the site after the overcut. It was not, no one on the Select Board is an expert in vernal pools, or their restoration, or any of that. You know, hearing, reading the experts' thoughts on it, and then looking at this plan again, there is a paved road, a wet pond with all kinds of riprap and things like that around vernal pool number three. There are infiltration bases around vernal pool number one. I do not think that it is too much to ask to have that site restored with what's already being taken off of there. And I, I think what the forester has laid out is species that he's recommending, but he hasn't recommended spacing or exact concentration in that area. Am I seeing that correctly? And I think this is a complicated issue, and a lot of people think that they're kind of armchair quarterbacks on the vernal pools and know how to fix them, but there is a building right up against this buffer. There are numerous structures and things like that that are right against that buffer area already. Some are in that buffer area. I think that needs to be restored, and it needs to be done under the plan of a competent
And I don't think we necessarily need a third, third president, as Mike said, you know.
Hang on. You can work with him. Mr. President. Mr. McKeever, Mr. Brezlin, you...
Yes.
You're good?
Yes.
Does anybody here know, behind all these buildings, we are talking all of this cul-de-sac, what was taken out of the trees? Anybody in this room know what was taken out of that area?
It looked like all of it to me.
So that was a paper road that came through there. There wasn't any trees behind all of it.
Just say it on a silent jet.
There was no trees behind any of these five buildings. That was the paper road that I walked with Lynn's father. We almost drove the car down there. That's how wide this road was, went out to the left, and went out to the right around all these vernal pools. So you're talking about planting all over these vernal pools. There was no trees in the beginning with. It was a paper road. You could drive a car down there. So you're talking trees, trees, trees. You don't even know what trees were gone. Throw it down, throw it down, throw it down.
Anybody else wish to express?
I just have one comment. The one thing that I'm confused about is that when we did the sidewalk, and we were listening to all the information about vernal pools, and I'm not a vernal pool expert, but one of the things they were saying was that they needed more trees on the southern side of the vernal pool to keep the, the canopy there and the sun out. And here, and we did see that trees have been cut because we saw the stumps. And I don't see any of those trees being replaced, and just didn't know if that was something that was important or not important. And that was just one of the things that I took away from the sidewalk. And maybe other people could, could be far more informative on that, but it just seemed like they were cut, they were, there were indeed stumps, and they were on that southern side of the vernal pool, and didn't know perhaps if there should be more trees put there, which are not on the plan.
All those stumps that were put in there weren't necessarily taken out of there. They were put back there at the recommendation of the town engineer, but those stumps necessarily did not come from that whole area. That was a complete paper road that, that I'm sure Lynn's father protested, that that is where it went, right along all those. And you could talk to the kid of maternal sales who snowballed that whole area all the time, up and down those vernal pools. You wouldn't be snowballing up and down those vernal pools if it was full of trees. That's for sure.
Any other board members have, have thoughts on this?
I like what Mr. Komol said, well, and force the trial together to, and work with challenge to...
Well, and that's, and that's, that's, that's kind of where I would fall on this. Again, with, with, with acknowledging the fact that, that time is moving on here, and and we're rapidly approaching planting season, but we have, we have seven folks sitting around here who are not experts in this subject, trying to do the best we can to come to a decision on, on what this amended site plan should be. We have opinions of two experts that, that differ somewhat, and, but we do have a suggestion from one of them, the gentleman who's here, that he worked with the other gentleman, the forester, and come up with a joint recommendation for this board. And I think, to be honest, if we don't, for, for me, if we don't take that step, anything short of restoration back to what it was would not be acceptable to me. So I, I think that, I think that, you know, some sort of a compromise to be, to be put together by the two experts as a recommendation to this board would be, would be a wise move to do. That's, that's, that's my...
I think just in addition to that, Charlie used a woodland scientist who also, or conservationist, forget who your expert was, but you also had an expert that also looked over this, and that's why you based your plan.
Yes.
I think that person, or Charlie, should be involved in those conversations too, so that they can determine how, if they can come up with a consensus, so when they come before us at another meeting in two weeks or whatever, there's an, there's an agreement that we can all agree on and vote on, and have everybody...
Perhaps we should ask him. I was going to say, Mr. Komol, you, this, this would bring another party into that discussion. Do you think that that would be a good approach, and would it be valuable?
I think that would be fair to the applicant. If it's a qualified person, I would be pleased to sit down with them and, you know, work with them to resolve this.
Who's paying all these people? I'm sure he's going to stand there free. It's not. Who's paying them?
You.
Exactly. The larger he stands there, the better off he is. I'm all set with that.
We, we understand the board needs expert advice, but we think that we should move this along as rapidly and as reasonably as we can.
Okay, well, I'll say, this plan, as it sits right now, doesn't address any of those issues. So this isn't a plan in front of us that's workable, is it? Is that addressing anything that was brought up in either of those two levels, as it sits?
This was the plan, this was the plan I submitted before there was any review by the two experts.
So what plan are we talking about?
I, I don't think that's fair, but, so that was my best attempt, working with Joe, to resolve a multitude of issues here, not only to revegetate some of the buffer areas, but to also provide screening, and also limitations on areas that have been cut, keep people out of it again. So I think that's what I was trying to do. Like I said, this is before the opinions of the experts. Now, listening to both the experts' opinions... Now, listening to both the experts' opinions, apparently there's a difference of opinion whether or not you should go back into the buffer areas and disturb it. If this board is more inclined to add more trees within those buffer areas, there's about four areas that have been disturbed around these vernal pools. I could go in there and prorate it, take the 100 proposed trees that Joe is willing to put out here and add that amount of density to each one based on the area, if that's what the board would want to do, and we could use the plantings that are recommended by the forester. I think that's a nice compromise. Maybe we could do something like that.
I'm just saying, we're arguing about time and, but we don't have a plan. No decision is going to be reached tonight because we don't have a plan in front of us to vote on. And so I think regardless, we're going to have to go to another meeting because we need the plan, we can't just say, yeah, go ahead, because this plan isn't addressing either of those two experts' concerns. And I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's anyone's fault, I'm just saying we need to have a better plan in front of us to vote on, in my opinion.
And if I can, I'm not getting from Mr. Como that he thinks that everything that's being planted is going to be a tree, that they might be, you said something about native shrubs or?
That was my point in the, in my letter. Mr. Jordan feels that the tree planting would be adequate, so that's one of the areas where we disagree.
So I just don't think that when we keep saying, we'll remove trees, we'll plant these trees, some plantings may not be a tree per se. So that's why I think getting everybody together to come up with a better plan is a reasonable thing to do.
We're concentrating now on the vernal pools, but there were two issues, and I think you addressed well the buffer issues, but if you're talking about taking those trees from the visual buffer to put, you know, if you're talking about a fixed number of trees that we'd be willing to work with, and we've decided that we're going to accept recommendations of the experts in vernal pools to restore that as best as can be done, given the current conditions on the ground, then that's going to undo the requirements that you create a 50-foot vegetated buffer or try to recreate as best as possible a 50-foot vegetated buffer.
Well, I got the person from the forester's letter that he was in favor of just leaving that undisturbed, the area that we're talking about as a screening area, leaving that undisturbed. So I don't think we're, we may not be talking about a huge change, it's just where the trees are going, is what we're trying to address here, to make sure they're going in the right spot. I mean, in reading the forester's letter, that's what I took from it, that he was more in favor of leaving that area alone and focusing on the vernal pool area.
Hey, if they can come back with a plan that 75, they agree 75%, and all we have to worry about is what the other 25% is and take a vote, I think that's a win.
I think the next question is, is if Mike worked, it may be up to the applicant whether they want to include the original soil scientist in that or not, but it would be more efficient if the two people that did the sidewalk can get together and concur on a recommendation that would include the soil scientist aspect of it, you know, the understory perhaps, you know, with the trees, so it would be less expensive, deadbolt plantings. And my real question is, what timeframe do we need? And are you going to exclude the scientist or do you want to have the soil scientist added to that mix?
Well, I guess for me, the only question is, and Joe can, can respond to this as well, he's already planted about, I think it was 87 trees as required by site plan. He's created a pretty good arborvitae buffer on the subtly boundary line, and now we're proposing an additional, two strips of 50 for 100, and then there was another dozen trees or so beyond that for the buffer on the, the westerly property line. I think Joe estimated from purchase, delivery, installation is about 300 bucks a tree, so he's talking about 30, some odd thousand dollars here. I would assume that if we, if we look at this and try and redistribute it, we're talking about redistribution of these 100 trees, I would hope, and not adding greatly to that.
I don't see where we can designate a fixed cost. We have to work with them because quite frankly, you know, how he recovers his damages from the subcontractor, there is, you know, our, our position is we need to protect the town's interests in vernal pools and the neighboring, neighbors' interests in visual buffers. So we need to have, because we are not experts in vernal pools, we need to get experts to give us recommendations on how that best can be accomplished in a reasonable way. And I think we could probably, the board in the past has been able to make decisions about visual buffers, and then we have to have some kind of way of ensuring that there's, I mean, future inspections to make sure that this, you know, that they survive the transfers and things and that there's some kind of mediation if there's a large die-off. So that's why I'm asking if, if we can get the idea rolling between Mike and whoever, whoever else, and to come up with a plan and see if they can, see what timeframe that they think that could happen. It may not be something that we can find out until he's conferred with Greg, and if you want to have another person with that person too.
Why don't we assume that they can get it together so that we can continue this on March 17th, and then if anything comes up that comes to issue, we can, we can amend from there, but I don't want to, I want to try and put it off until we find the state.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, that's why I'm trying to get a recommendation now, but what's?
I just think two weeks is probably too.
Too, too short.
But, on March 17th.
Side with the letter, it appears that the forester agrees with the plantings of the trees and where they were, where they were going to go. And he's simply recommending certain species of trees, but he's also recommending something that should be, I think, part of the plan, and that's how the trees are going to be planted and how they're going to be watered, so that that can be, they can remain and they won't die, and that they'll be inspected. So I think that part is all, as Chris said, very good, and I think we should take that into consideration. And the only thing we're really talking about is if anything else, any extras or anything lower should be added to it. I mean, I don't see a lot of big changes here. I do see that there should be a plan for inspecting and making sure that the trees live, but other than that, I think, I think we're 90% of the way there between the two. It's just kind of crawling across the other 10%.
So are you, are you, I'm trying to understand where you're going with that. Are you supporting the concept of having the folks come up with a unified plan?
I think they can come up with a unified plan. I don't think they're that far off.
Right.
I don't think we're far off at all. I think if they sat down with a one or two hour meeting, they'd be done.
All right, while there's a quiet spot here, this is a public hearing, so I want to make sure that if, if there are folks in the audience who are rebutters or interested parties that wish to speak, that you have a chance to do that. And I, you folks are with the next application. And I believe the gentleman behind you, Charlie, is Mr. Brezner's son, who certainly can speak if he wishes. I don't know if these folks are here for this application or the next one.
No, I'm sorry, I just want.
So you don't, you don't wish to speak, correct? Close the public comment period then. Okay, what, what is, what is the, what is the wish of the board?
I recommend that we ask Mike and Greg to come up with a unified plan for restoration of vernal pools and, and for the visual buffer, I guess, well, site, site restoration.
Yeah, restoration, however you want to describe it. Right. And you're going to use Charlie's gentleman as well. Yep. Well, it's pretty. Well. I think that the initial suggestion of Mr. Como was that he and Mr. Jordan get together, and then thought was that, you know, it would be helpful if the applicant were involved in that discussion too. Whoever that person or persons are would be up to them. And Mike, you're okay and I'm assuming Greg would be okay working as a, working as a team on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Why wouldn't you? I don't know why. How can I help you?
So do we have to use Mike or can we use one of Charlie's experts and the forester?
It's going to be Mike, the forester, and whoever you guys want to add to the party. It'll be a team of folks. And I have to address your comment about price and cost, and I, I am sorry about that, I understand that, but by the same token, we're here due to some work that was done by somebody working for you, and hopefully you'll be able to recoup that by, by, by going after the contract.
As you've stated in the past, there's nothing on this plan that you have ever voted in favor of, zero, since day one, and the only thing that's going to make you happy is if it was right back to the way it looked from day one with nothing there. I will never get a vote from you, pause it, no matter what it is, and I'll guarantee that.
Really?
Really. Have you ever, have you voted ever in favor of one thing on this plan?
That's a challenge.
Have you voted in favor of anything yet today?
All right. Hey, Mr. McHitterick, would you please?
I understand.
This is, this is not the place.
No, I understand.
Have you ever voted in favor of?
This is not the place for that discussion.
Understand, he's frustrated.
I understand.
But we, we.
I do.
Yeah.
I purposely, I, knowing how Mr. Brezner feels, I purposely did not express my opinion until every other board member had an opportunity to speak tonight, so. And I certainly don't think that I, anyway. Okay, is there a, is there, is there a motion?
When's the date? When would the date be?
Well, the date would be for the March 17th meeting.
You've kind of, I don't know, it was kind of Bush made second to continue the March 17th and asked Mr. Como and Greg, I don't have his last name, to come up with a plan.
Jordan.
Jordan, thank you. Peter only said Greg, is it?
Yeah, that's right.
Come up with a plan for restoration of vernal pools and site restoration. The applicant can also be involved in the discussion with either the engineer or other expert, as they desire, I guess, or?
Point of order. I don't believe that was the motion.
No, that's why, this is all that's been bouncing around, no one's made the motion yet. They've just thrown out all these phrases and I've been writing them down, but no one's made a motion.
No.
But that's what you've all, if he just starts to say something, then everybody's at home, but nobody's made a motion.
So I think we should be still at discussion stages, if there's anything else we should be suggesting in a, in a motion. So I would move that we continue this hearing until the March 17th meeting. The request that the board asked Mike Como and Greg Jordan to come up with a unified plan for the restoration of vernal pools and site buffer zones.
With an addition, but.
Oh, sorry? Yes, sorry, I was trying to remember. With representative, representatives or representatives as from the applicant, as desired, and that coordination, should we ask them, ask them to coordinate that effort since it's soon, since it'll need to be done fairly quickly and?
In all fairness to Mr. Brezner and his pain, Mr. Como, shouldn't Mr. Greenwood try and work, get this together?
That's, yeah. And when do you want to have this report available to the board? At any time prior to the board meeting, or should we have it?
Mike, do you have any sense of, of what your timeframe would be to come up with this plan that we're talking about? I know you can't speak for Mr. Jordan, but.
I can tell you that I'm going on vacation the day after tomorrow, but I don't see any reason why Mr. Jordan and I couldn't meet in the first week of March and complete our portion in a fairly short period of time. That's going to have to get translated onto a plan that Mr. Zilch is going to prepare. So perhaps we could have our joint recommendations prepared by the end of the first week of March. That would give you some time before the meeting on the 17th. I cannot attend the meeting on the 17th because I have another planning board meeting I'm already committed to, but we have the joint recommendations. Oops. For our perspective.
I guess we should ask the applicant if that's timeframe works for them.
Yes.
So when would the applicant be able to have the revised plan into us?
So do I? If you get it by the end of, it's on March 6th, you'd be able to get it to us by?
The 12th.
The 13th?
What's it going to be? What date?
12.
The 12th is Thursday, but.
Because everything is Monday and Elwin's here on the 12th, at noon.
Yeah, this isn't going to departmental, so.
But that gives us, that gives Elwin two days to, because Elwin doesn't work on Friday. So that gives her either the afternoon of the 12th or the 16th to get that to us.
And I'll, I'll get it to electronically as well, so you can just email it.
That's great, perfect.
And, all right, so with those dates, the scientists will meet and produce a plan.
Just a little March 12th?
Yeah, but the plan by the 6th, so that the, provided to Charlie Zilch by the 6th, and with plans to be revived to the planning board by noon on the 12th of March electronically. Anything else that we might include in that? With Glenn Greenwood, coordinate Glenn, Glenn as the coordinator here.
Entity. You got that. Glenn, you're good with that, right? Mr. McHitterick?
I would suggest volunteering Charlie to be the coordinator of getting the meeting together. He seems to be central to that, and it'll be easier, I think, for him to reach out to the experts than one of the experts to reach out to two others.
And I'll work with Glenn if you'd like to.
So just, Glenn's going to work with Charlie?
If Glenn, Glenn works with Charlie and the two of them can pull this together.
That's fine.
All right, so.
So that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Before we continue?
Yeah, yes.
One concern is, are we coming up on the 65-day clock because we, the board accepted jurisdiction on the 10th of December?
Right. If, if you, I mean, by default, if you, if you were to agree to a continuance, you're agreeing to the extension of the clock.
That's fine.
But if, but if you want us to deal with specifically with the extension of the clock, we can do that.
I think, I have no, no issue with extending to the, at least the 17th. And if we, if we feel we need more time, I can always ask for additional time.
We wouldn't expect you to extend it beyond that at this point.
I wouldn't expect to, no.
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 So was there enough set to create a motion?
Oh, would, yes. Yes. Let me see if it makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have a motion? Do you want me to read it?
Do you want it?
No, it's a.
Uh, question or?
It's a.
But I just said. But I just said, can you confirm this? Did we have a second?
We don't. Yeah, tonight.
Tell them what we're reading tonight.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Mike, thank you. I assume, I assume you guys would be in touch soon. Glenn?
I don't know. Can I take five?
Glenn, you've got one?
I think I do.
Stay with you guys.
Yeah.
And it's Mr. Green.
Yes.
All right, we've got plans in front of us.
Okay.
This is the hearing, and so the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Green. I'm an answerer. And I'm representing North Asia Automation LLC and I have the honor with me this evening. And we were here last month looking for a site plan or change of use to an existing property with very, very minimal changes, basically just the use. And we had several comments by both the planner and the town engineer. And I went down through and I tried to address all of them as fully as I could. Things like the existing snow storage was far away. I moved that closer to where the parking's gonna be. I had to, you know, little stuff. The well radius wasn't shown on the plan. And you'll note that I, I still made a mistake on that because I realized afterwards, what you have in front of you is a 75-foot radius and it's a 100-foot radius. As you know, I have corrected that and it doesn't really affect anything much different than it is, but it, it is something I realized.
So, so what's on the plan is?
It's 75 feet. Yeah, so that would be something that I would ask is, you know, it's part of the condition. Correct.
Yep.
The dumpster location was moved, but I forgot what the detail noted on it. Okay? So, so basically the dumpster location is being moved behind the storage building down in the parking lot so that you can access the south gate, which is the largest gate into the back. You would come down around and be able to do that. It will be enclosed. It will have a concrete base and it'll be basically a 12 by 12, six foot high with a gate in it for the dumpster to go inside. And so that, that, the location is there. The detail is within that, the planner had mentioned to me. A temporary benchmark has been placed on the stormwater catch basin room, which is one of the most permanent locations on the site. And that is noted on those elevations changed based on that. It was just, I mean, state plane elevation. I have to apologize. I left my note sheet that I was reviewing before I got here on my desk.
So that's, that's, that's not helpful for you.
No, no, but I, I don't use Google. So I wanna make sure I'm covering everything. There was the question about landscaping. And we know that, that there's three places of landscaping that exist now. We're not proposing to do any more than that. One is on the north end of the parking lot in the front, which is, which is grass, which is also an area where snow storage could go if necessary. The second one is in the middle of the lot on the roadside and it's a pre-existing landscaped area with landscaping timbers where you plant flowers and, and, you know, that decorative type stuff, which is front of the office building. That's remaining, asking to be remained there, but kept up and maintained as, as an area. Note nine, I think it is, signifies that. Actually, it's note 17, I'm sorry. And then the last one being at the south end of the property in the front. And that's also a grassed area and it's got a forested area behind that. So there's only like 30 feet of area from the property line to the, to the existing tree line. And that's gonna be used as a storage area for snow. We gotta be able to push the snow all along the frontage someplace and that would be the best area to put it. And I think that's where they currently do that now. Keeps it away from the gates. We did speak to the fire department, but I didn't get a, I didn't get the letter from them. He never, I don't know if he sent it to you or not.
We do have a comment sheet from them.
Okay.
So I, I will be, I will be reading that.
So I did speak with them. We both spoke with them. It was the day we dropped all the land bombs. We finally got a hold of them. And the chief, he said, it looks like the recommendation was a Knox box on the gate. There may be more and we'll discuss that afterwards, but the one thing I did put is a Knox box. And that would be on the south corner, the southernmost building, which is the gate that would access the back of the property.
Right.
Because I don't think the fire department's gonna wanna go between two burning buildings and, and on the right side, you can't get around the building with a fire truck anywhere.
Right.
Okay? So the Knox box would be located there. And I think that's basically, the only other thing which I, I addressed was, we had submitted a couple of things. One was the question came up about the, the drainage system that's there for the stormwater and all of that.
Oh, that, that multi-chamber.
Right, exactly. And so I, I got a, a letter from a gentleman who worked for Mr. Dudek, who was the current, who was the previous owner. When they did the, they did a site one evaluation, a site two evaluation.
Phase two.
Okay. And then they also did level two. Yeah, level one, level two. They also did a report on this, on the clean out of the system and whether it was working and all of that. So I submitted a letter that came directly.
Okay. It's 9:30. We're starting the last public hearing. And it's for New England Automation LLC at 4 Main Street, tax map R-21, lot 22. And the public notice reads that the applicant is proposing to convert the current use of the property from an existing auto salvage yard to a space for office, storage, and equipment. And this is a continuation of the hearing that we had the last... was it the last one? Last one? So, this is the second meeting.
Yes.
And there were some comments and some discussion. And I believe that you were going to be coming back to us with some response to that. So, we'll turn it over to you for that initial discussion. And you're gonna need to use those mics.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask you, for the record again, to introduce your team to us. And for the record, please. Glenn, you've got one?
I think I do.
Stay the O2 guy. And it's Mr. Green.
Yes.
All right. We've got plans in front of us.
Okay.
This is the hearing. And so, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Green. I'm a land surveyor. And I'm representing North Asia Automation LLC. And I have the owner with me this evening. And we were here last month looking for a site plan or change of use to an existing property with very, very minimal changes. Basically, just the use. And we had several comments by both planner and the town engineer. And I went down through them. And I tried to address all of them as fully as I could. Things like the existing snow storage was far away. I moved that closer to where the parking's gonna be. I had to... you know, little stuff. The well radius wasn't shown on the plan. And you'll note that I still made a mistake on that because I realized afterwards what you have in front of you is a 75-foot radius. And it's 100-foot radius. As you know, I have corrected that. And it doesn't really affect anything much different than it is. But it is something I realized.
So, what's on the plan is?
Is 75 feet. Yeah. So, that would be something that I would ask is, you know, it's part of the condition.
Yep.
The dumpster location was moved. But I forgot what the detail noted on it. Okay? So, basically, the dumpster location is being moved behind the storage building down in the parking lot so that you can access the south gate, which is the largest gate into the back. You would come down around and be able to do that. It will be enclosed. It will have a concrete base. And it'll be basically 12 by 12, six foot high, with a gate in it for the dumpster to go inside. And so, the location is there. The detail is within that the planner had mentioned to me. A temporary benchmark has been placed on the stormwater catch basin room, which is one of the most permanent locations on the site. And that is noted on those. Elevation's changed based on that. It was just, I mean, state plane elevation. I have to apologize. I left my note sheet that I was reviewing before I got here on my desk.
So, that's not helpful for you.
No, no. I don't use the paper so... I wanna make sure I'm covering everything. There was the question about landscaping. And we know that there's three places of landscaping that exist now. We're not proposing to do any more than that. One is on the north end of the parking lot in the front, which is grass, which is also an area where snow storage could go if necessary. The second one is in the middle of the lot on the roadside. And it's a pre-existing landscaped area with landscaping timbers where you plant flowers and, you know, that decorative type stuff, which is in front of the office building. That's asking to be remained there. But kept up and maintained as an area. Note 9, I think it is, signifies that. Actually, it's note 17, I'm sorry. And then the last one being at the south end of the property in the front. And that's also a grassed area. And it's got a forested area behind that. So, there's only like 30 feet of area from the property line to the existing tree line. And that's gonna be used as a storage area for snow. We gotta be able to push the snow all along the frontage someplace. And that would be the best area to put it. And I think that's where they currently do that now. Keeps it away from the gates. We did speak to the fire department, but I didn't get a... I didn't get the letter from him. He never... I don't know if he sent it to you or not.
We do have a comment sheet from them.
Okay.
So, I will be...
We do all of that.
I will be reading that.
So, I did speak with them. We both spoke with them. The day we dropped all the plan bombs, we finally got ahold of them. And the chief, he said it looks like the only recommendation was a Knox box on the gate. There may be more. And we'll discuss that afterward. But the one thing I did put is a Knox box. And that would be on the south corner, the southernmost building, which is the gate that would access the back of the property.
Right.
Because I don't think the fire department's gonna wanna go between two burning buildings. And on the right side, you can't get around the building with a fire truck anywhere.
Right.
So, the Knox box would be located there. And I think that's basically the only other thing which I addressed was... We had submitted a couple of things. One was the question came up about the drainage system that's there for the stormwater and all of that.
Oh, that multi-chamber.
Right, exactly. And so, I got a letter from a gentleman who worked for Mr. Dudek, who was the current, who was the previous owner. When they did the... They did a Site 1 evaluation, Site 2 evaluation.
Phase 2.
Okay. And then they also did... Level 2. Yeah, Level 1, Level 2. They also did a report on the clean out of the system and whether it was working and all of that. So, I submitted a letter that came directly from him stating that it was all in working order way more than a site would ever need now versus what it was. And it showed pictures of it and all the information. I think that's necessary.
If you show them. At least, I remember Steve. And I can't remember if Ellen sent it to me or to all the board members.
I got it.
Okay. Now, that was helpful. It was a good report.
Yes. And so, and then the next thing was the setbacks weren't on... I had not put the setbacks on the wetlands. So, I did that. And I submitted a... What do they call that? I'm not a wetland's person. I deal with all of that. It's one of the first thing that they did. It's the wetland evaluation.
Yep.
So, that determines what...
Functional value.
The functional value. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. And we did have that done by the wetlands gentleman that I hired, Josh Bryan. And it came out that we had to have a 45-foot setback from the edge. And so, that is now shown on the plan. Those were the major things.
And it looks as though you have his stamp on the plan?
Yes.
Which is good.
And then one other.
Well, we should... I know that Dennis and Glenn have their comments. So, we'll let them go through those.
Yeah. So, one of the things was about the colors of the plan and that type of stuff. I'm known for having colorful plans. Not like highlighted stuff. But I have my colors. And most towns like it. But it's always black and white when it gets recorded. Okay? So, I think when I submitted these, this time I did it black and white, which is hard to remember because it's easier for me than with the colors to see the lines. But we will make sure that everything's done as per request with black.
Now, this'll end up eventually on a Mylar that will get recorded with the registry of deeds.
Right, exactly.
And obviously, that's just my opinion.
And I have double rocking and pounding very, very...
Pretty particular about a lot of things. Very particular.
Very.
And getting more so, right, Glenn?
Yes. The last time I brought one in was the comment was, "Well, since you're fixing that, these two are almost over-striked." And I'm like, "But they're not." And they're like, "No, but since you're fixing that, can you just move these over a little bit more?" And I'm like, "That's sticky." But you do what to do. You do what you gotta do to that.
Okay. Glenn and Dennis, why don't... Glenn, yours are gonna be fast because it looks as though most of yours were addressed.
I'm addressing very fast. The only ones that he didn't address...
The grain of a copy of your comments.
Yes. The only ones he didn't address were the detail of the dumpster that he's already said he'll add on. And my other comment was my deferral to Dennis to make sure that stormwater management regulations are complied with. And so, I've noticed, looking at his plan, that his notes that he has some. So, I'll turn it over to him now.
That was it for you?
That was it, yeah. Very quick.
Dennis, correct?
So, I'll go through my comments. And number one, sheets for recording should comply with the standard registry of deeds we just talked about. So, I would recommend going to the registry as soon as you can. Some of the text, to me, looks a little bit small for what they accept. So, you might have to make sure like the text is bigger than what you showed here. But things like that, they'll pick at it, as you know. Number 2, zoning article 202. Building setbacks in the wetlands must be shown with justification. So, the submitted report provides a required evaluation of the wetlands and provides a buffer setback to be 45 feet. I have no objection to this determination. Should the buffer limit shown on the plan be defined on the site by some sort of physical features to prevent encroachment? So, that line is shown on the plan. It's just a line on the plan. There is a concrete block wall in behind it. And I don't know if there's any intent of going anywhere near it now. But I didn't know if sometimes there's monuments that have flags or stakes or something that sometimes towns want to define where the limit of the setback is. But there is quite a wall there now. So, it may not be necessary. But just a comment that I bring up. Permanent benchmarks. Benchmark is shown to the room of the catch basin. Its elevation 140, 194. The floor elevation of the buildings and a few spot elevations are in the 500 range. So, those should be changed. That's just a drafting thing. That's easy to change.
Just wondering I noticed that, just as you said it.
Number 4. Plans must show the detail for the drainage in accordance with the stormwater management. Geoinsight report has limited details and description of the existing drainage structures. Its function is to trap contaminants from stormwater surface runoff prior to entering the wetlands. Required... Requiring further detailed information would require excavation and possible disturbance of the structure, which from the report appears to be functioning properly. Therefore, I would not recommend further investigation of the system. However, the regulations do require that a long-term inspection and maintenance plan be provided and recorded in the registry of deeds according to Article 908, 16, 6. The Geoinsight report also describes how soil borings were performed for groundwater sampling and testing. The test results of the samples taken show that contaminants were not detected above laboratory practical limits. Should the location of where these borings were done be shown on the plan? Another question, which... Whether it's important to be on the plan or not, that's up to the board. Number 5. The building type and location of entrance should be provided. Section G25 requires showing the eval... Elevation of the building. And are the buildings heated with gas or oil? And the location of these containers should be shown on the plan. I don't know if there's underground tanks or oil tanks or above ground. And those should be probably shown on...
There, inside the buildings.
Inside the building. So, as long as that's...
Everything's contained within the building.
Inside the building, okay. Well, that answers that. Number 6. The water supply well is provided. Show proper well protective zone. The state requires 75-foot radius. The town requires 100-foot. Sewer disposal area is shown. Since the disposal system is old, I recommend an inspection report be provided to verify its proper function. But certainly, that's something you can talk about, too. It's my understanding that you're not gonna have a lot of use of the building. So, maybe that's an issue that the board could overlook. But that's up to the board, too. But typically, when a septic system is not a fairly new system, it should be checked out.
I brought a septic installer when I was buying it. And we confirmed it was... I didn't have to replace the septic.
Did you invite a reporter or anything?
No. But I asked, probably get a report.
That would be helpful for the town, I would think, to have something on the record for that. Landscaping. You already addressed some of the landscaping here. Question, is that enough? The buffer zone proposed fencing is proposed along the rear property line. Sorry. The limits at the beginning and the end of the fence should be shown, which is just a drafting thing. And is that acceptable to the board in the abutis? Should additional buffers be shown to the east lot line, which is... Which is the northeast sideline there, which I think we talked about at the last meeting. There's a fence there already on that northeast side. So, question is, is that enough of a buffer at this point in time? Show the details for the dumpster. May the board should wish... They wish to see additional parking scheme. But that's certainly something to talk about again because I'm not sure that was decided. And any additional parking should be on pavement, showing the cross-sectioned details. Number 12 is requirements for the fire department must be addressed. 907, 383. This regulation requires a performance guarantee amount to be established prior to approval. And that the regulation does require the performance guarantee to be in place prior to construction. Now, those regulations are typically for site plans and need a lot of development. This one doesn't. And I go through the regulations. I pick out some of these things that maybe either haven't been addressed completely or haven't been addressed at all. So, some of these things like that could be overlooked by companies. So, basically, that's what I have for a list. These are comments, isn't coming for you. So, things to discuss and things to address. Basically, most of my comments, I think, are just drafting things. So, I don't really think there's anything major on my comments.
Well, I mean, the issue about parking. You bring up the issue. If there's gonna... If there's a plan for additional parking should be shown, it's...
Well, I think we talked about that at the last meeting. I think that... Well, we can talk about it.
Parking.
Yeah. So, we'll stop at parking. We're not asking for any additional parking because we only have one employee there who's flying six spots. So, we'd like to probably keep it at that. He don't have any intentions of being a landlord or anything like that. And if so, then we'll come back before the board would change. So, we don't wanna get into that if we can help it. And marking the buffer. Again, the board can make that call. It's in the middle of the gravel parking area that's already established. So, I mean, if you wanna have something put there to pull us back, that's fine. That would be, you know, if that's what you want. But I think because the drainage system and everything is within that buffer area or catching it at that point. And we don't have any intentions of being in that area anyway. If nothing else, we can put a note on the plan and it can't be within... I can do an extra measurement, but say 50 feet from the concrete wall, you know, without actually putting something in there. That's, again, that's up to the board to make that decision.
Well, I think that buffers presumably is to prevent construction of anything inside the buffer. Is that... Or is it also to be prevent parking or something in there? Because...
That 45-foot, I believe, is an offset to the wetlands.
To the wetlands. Right.
So, it probably is a no-activity kind of buffer.
Because I was thinking if there's just no construction within there, it would get picked up if you came in to do some of the building. It would have to be shown on this plan. And you would be able to see the line there. But if it's an activity buffer, no-activity buffer...
Well, is it? I guess that's a question.
Yeah.
Usually, you know, on a typical plan where you've got a 20-foot setback, that's a building setback.
Right.
A wetland setback.
How high is the wall, the block wall back there?
Excuse me?
The block wall you have there?
Yes. That varies from there.
3 feet?
60. So, there's summer doubled.
So, the question is, does the board feel that it should be marked on-site to indicate where that line is? I guess that's the question. It certainly indicates...
I don't think it's to be marked. If all of a sudden, we discover a bunch of activity, I think you address it.
I don't know the site.
I don't know.
That's not even where someone could just park a vehicle by mistake, is it? I don't know the site.
You could, but there's no reason.
It's not like it's right next to where they would be.
Yeah. It's not like there are customers that don't know the deal of the town and park there. The lower parking area probably is just trailers, right?
Yes.
So, that would indicate it's a total forest.
Because the site where the wetland buffer is, is the site that's closest to the residential area.
Yes.
And I know the gentleman is not here tonight because his question's got answered sadly, actually, I guess, at the last meeting. But... And your plan, as you describe it, is to keep as much of the activity away from that side as possible, largely because of the residential area. So, you're focusing more on the southern side.
Right. And I think a lot of when you think wetland buffer, a lot of it is you don't want the runoff going down into the wetlands. That's why you have it so far back. And because of the block wall is there and the drainage system that was installed and the grading that is there, it's already preventing that from happening. So, being a little bit over that, I think, is a major... I mean, I wouldn't be asking for it if I was proposing it, but it's already existing, so...
So, if we don't mark it on-site, it probably ought to be marked on the plan of what it is. I see the line is there. Is it actually noted as well?
It says wetland setback.
It does.
And I do have the 45-foot distance there also.
Is there a note, no activity?
I can add a note that says that. Yeah. Running out of space of notes on my plan.
Let me read the fire department's comments for you before I forget to do that.
Okay.
And we did receive comment sheets back from Board of Selectmen, from Health Department, and from Building Department. And none of them had comments.
Okay.
But the fire department has four bullets. One is the Knox box.
Okay.
With keys to building and/or any gates. I guess that's... You'd need to work that out with them. The second bullet... Oh, and there's an online order form attached.
Wow.
For Knox boxes.
Oh, okay.
So, there you go. If you didn't already know...
Right. That's good.
There's... Fourth bullet, a third bullet, shall comply with NFPA 1 and NFPA 101. Those are National Fire Protection Association codes. I don't know what they are. But if you have any question on these comments, you should be in touch with the fire chief.
Yeah, we can do that because we were waiting for it. They were at the call. They were with him, and he took off. It's just that that's what they're...
He'll converse with you, and he'll explain any of this that needs to be explained.
What the notes say? Which ones? NFPA 1?
NFPA 1 and 101. And then the fourth bullet is, "Shall have a complete fire alarm system." I assume that means in the buildings.
Okay. Okay, it does have one in there, so we'll just do a, we'll make sure we're working on it and give a report to the Fire Department.
Okay. But I'm assuming that, I mean, whenever a building, commercial building, or business changes hands...
Yeah.
The town requires an occupancy permit, and so inspectors will come through and make sure, and the Fire Department will probably be checking for things like that for...
Make sure when that happens.
So those are the Fire Department comments. All right, we've talked about Dennis's, we've talked about Glenn's. Questions from the board?
Is there a note now about complying with the signage and lighting?
There isn't a note.
Thank you. So over in the middle, we have lighting that is underneath the E's on the buildings in the front. Okay, so they go down. And then we had two big spotlights on the utility pole. And we talked about that last time, and I put a note on here, two spotlights on utility pole to be removed and with the pole number. And then we're on, not level, note nine, because it was questioned about the sign, which is in the same area. Existing sign is a double-sided 10-foot by 4-foot by 12-foot high, which equals 40 square feet per side. Okay? And the way I read the regulation, it's the 40 square feet that matter.
Correct.
On one side, okay? That's the way I read it. And there are no lights on the sign and none proposed. Okay? It's not going to be a lighting sign in any way. Okay? It's only a daytime sign, just so they know they're at the right location. Somebody does come in, most of the business isn't there. This sign, to be modified, to meet the sign regulations in a residential area, sign to be no more than 24 square foot by 12-foot high. Existing signs do not need to be changed per Section 303.3(c)(9) existing non-conforming. But we did, I put that in there because the way I read it is if the sign is there, you have to get rid of it. You have to get rid of the sign face within 90 days of a business closing down, and you don't remove the structure that it's on. And then it says it can be used. I have a copy of that here. But we were talking, he wanted a smaller sign anyway, so I put in the regulations and bring it down to the new regulation size. I think it was done at the commercial site originally because it tends to equal that. And now it's in residential, so yeah.
That sign was put in between owners, and there was a cease of assistance placed on it.
Okay, probably.
So never moved that previously.
Yes. It does say legally existing non-conforming signs may continue, but may not be altered, relocated on the same premises unless they have run into a performance. But we put on the plan that we're going to bring that into conformity. Okay? So regardless of whether we can or not. So the only thing we ask is that the location stay the same place.
And you probably would want to go to the Selectmen's office and get a sign permit?
Yes.
And when you do that, you'll be providing a schedule, dimensions, and so forth?
Actually, when they do the occupancy permit, the building inspector will come out. That's one of the things he'll check is the sign, so that should take care of it.
Okay.
So you're clear that that sign that you were just talking about, that is 40 and all that stuff, was never a legally conforming sign? So you're clear on that?
I don't know if it was ever legally conforming or not. All I know is it was there, so I was going by that. I didn't research it, so...
But you're clear on that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm there right now, yes. Yes, and that's why we're going to bring it into conformity.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the rules and whatever, so...
There's one thing about continuing a legally conforming kind of a use.
Right.
But when it wasn't legally conforming, you really can't...
Right, that's right. I understand.
Okay. There was a question about the, oh, from Dennis, about whether the buffer on the northeast side, the fence that's there, was sufficient. And I believe that Mr. Blaney, who was here last time, said that as long as he had access to the backside of his fence, he was fine with that as being existing buffer. So I think we got permission from him last time to avoid setbacks.
So I did add a note to that effect on the plan. And it says, existing water line fence is placed 5 to 7 feet from the property line, allowing Abada to maintain it. So the fence is actually 5 to 7 feet on his property. Okay? So he would have, he does have that much access to our property line, between the fence and the property line. So he would be all set anyway, but there's a note that says that...
Is it his fence or your fence?
It was put up by the previous owner, right? By the previous owner because of some things that were going on with him. But they put it on his land, it's really his fence now, that's why he wants to maintain it. Okay? So I think he did it to satisfy the...
You know, one segment is broken, so I propose I'll fix it for him anyways. He doesn't have to worry about it.
The door is much noise and smoke.
It's only Abada's property.
It's only Abada's property, yes.
So there's a wise understanding between...
They have an understanding, him, the owner of the Abada, and they're going to take care of, they're going to get the fence into a good condition as of, you know, when we get approval or whatever. And then from there on, it'll be up to the Abada to maintain it and keep it in order because it is on his land.
If you remember, at the last meeting, the Abada asked for space on the other side of that, and it was clear that he already had.
Yeah.
Peter, you had something else?
Yeah, I noticed there's a note about the lighting compliance. It really doesn't say that. It just says that the existing lights are all the down type lighting, and the E's lights on the utility pole facing in front of the building to be removed. I was wondering if we could expand that just to say, any additional, any lighting?
Any new lighting?
There's no lighting plan. Any new lighting needs to be applied with the lighting ordinance.
So you want me to add that on the plan?
I think it'd be worth putting it in. Just adding to that note that any lighting will be ordinance compliant.
Right, okay.
So there's no question about the fact that you guys know that there's a lighting ordinance? So I guess we should address the things that Dennis brought up, that whether we as a board want to talk about. The locations of the samples, I think this may be part of that missing exhibit that, and the report that was emailed out, that the actual locations of the test pits. So I'm not sure we have that available. Do you know if you have it available?
I don't. I just got the information on the borings, but I didn't speak to them about the location of them because I wasn't concerned about that.
Yeah, I think in the report, it said they were done in the areas where the storage tanks had been removed.
Right, right. So I mean, I think, I can speak with Mr. Frank and see, you know, if he's got anything without a doubt, and supply that information. I don't have, I don't, yeah, I don't, I didn't get a plan or a map or anything like that. So he may have something separate that would show the locations. Yeah, it was just, yeah, all he gave me, and I'm not sure he even gave you all of the analytical data, there's a lot of pages of numbers that...
I looked at the, the, the online map, but there was a reference to Exhibit A, and I think I've come to a copy we got. Your copy had something that showed where they put the pits. Because without that, I don't know if we can really require...
I can definitely, I can definitely do that. One way or another, somebody would know where they did them because there was a reference to it. And so I can, if you want them on the plan, or if you want something separate to put in file, it's, if it's something they've already got, I would assume you'd be okay with me just giving you...
I think it's in the report. I think that would be, if it's missing from the report, I think they would be giving that information so that you have...
And what are those of those of the...
Locations of the test pits that are...
Soil, oil, soil borings.
Which is what determined how clean it was underground.
What's it called, Peter?
Soil...
No, is it a mud tape?
Yeah.
It's called Figure 1.
Figure 1?
Figure 1, thank you, yeah.
Because I checked to see if the Selectmen had anything further than what I had, and they didn't.
Right. I figured, the way they referred to it, that that probably was what it was, but, so if you could check with the...
I can definitely...
Pretty good, made a report and says, missing Figure 1 from my copies.
Do you have Figure 1 in your report?
That's what it asks.
No, we didn't have it mine either.
So if we can get that for the file, that's probably...
For the file, I think that's all we need. I don't think we need it on the plans just because...
I mean, presumably, the figure would indicate where on the properties the borings are.
Yes, that's...
Chance's iron was a plan this side.
Text says that's it. All the figure does is show it.
It was folded. He mailed it to me, so we probably didn't have it in PDF form.
Yeah.
Is what it was.
Well, that could certainly be a condition if we get it on consult. Next, the writers.
Something about elevation from bench box or something.
Yeah, those are the 500-foot...
Well, I've, I mean, I've got a couple of things that I've made note of. Obviously dumpster detail, we've talked about that a couple of times. We need to correct the well radius to reflect 100 feet, Stat 75. Need to add the USGS datum. Dennis had a suggestion, and it's probably a valid one, and I don't know if you already have it somewhere, but an inspection and maintenance plan for that catchment structure? Because it's important that that be maintained to continue working properly.
Right. So what I can do, I got the, you know, where they inspected it from geosite, the gentleman and Frank, and I can, I can get with him more than likely, and he can give us a proposed maintenance, because he's on who tested it, checked it, and maintained it the first time, so he cleaned it, so...
There might be some standard maintenance plan that he can just provide.
That's, that's what I think he would have.
It can't, it can't be a special thing.
No, it's pretty standard.
Yeah. But I think if they have an Asper, the borings, did that, you know, also?
Okay, so something that would, something that would provide documentation on the maintenance of that structure.
It has to be filmed out of this, they don't want it to be at the top of the page.
Right. Or a cover sheet. You get them a cover sheet.
Okay.
And then report. The, the report on the septic system we talked about.
Yes, I had a gentleman was going to do that, but he didn't get it done. But he has, he said he had it done.
Right.
Right, so I would make contact with his inspector and do that.
So what kind of report of the septic system will be looking for?
Say a function, an indication of condition.
Yeah.
Just looking, okay.
Yeah.
So you did have any thought?
I'm sorry?
You had, you had a...
He had somebody look at it.
Yeah.
Just need a statement.
Stand, stand, all right, a statement, okay.
An indication on the plan of no activity in the buffer, the wetland buffer.
Right.
Okay. And finding that, that Figure 1 indicating soil borings.
Soil release.
And providing, and providing that to the board.
What was the one you said after, much detail?
The 100-foot well radius.
100-foot.
Because right now, it's 75, I believe.
Can we add a little bit of lighting?
In relation to dumpster, okay? The plan I have in front of me is just slightly different than what you have in front of you, and the dumpster is the change. Okay? So what happened was I submitted the plan, but didn't put the detail of it. You know, and so I've got a note, and I've got the fence location on the plan, and that's what I would ask that, you know, there's a condition, we make that revision. Okay? So it was an oversight. I showed the dumpster location, I moved it like requested, but then I didn't do the detail. And I did come up with a picture, just so everybody knows what we're talking about, is something like this is what we're asked for, just a solid wooden fence around that, which would also match the fence along the back, so fairly acceptable and easy.
It's pretty typical.
Yeah.
And it's fine, it works.
Lynn, you're ready for motion?
I'm ready, but...
I can tell, I have watched.
Make a motion that we grant conditional approval of the application.
Before you go any further, we did jurisdiction on this, did we not?
Yes. Oh, I think we did it last, at the last meeting. So I'd like someone to look at the minutes. I think we did.
Make a motion that we didn't accept jurisdiction, we do so now.
I think that we did, but...
Yeah, we did. I thought we did.
You wouldn't continue if you didn't accept the jurisdiction, remember the town?
Well, we have before.
I know.
Okay, continue.
Can I start?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we grant additional approval, grant approval for the application with the following conditions. That a permanent benchmark with USGS datum is placed on the plan. That the, that's number one. Number two, that the well radius at 100 feet is set on, is placed on the plan. That the detail for the solid waste, for the dumpster is detailed with the fence and the location. That the soil boring locations, Figure 1, be located and sent to the planning board for the file. Going too fast, Ellen?
Not so fast, but give me a second. So Figure 1 is sent to...
Yep, okay. That the proposed maintenance plan for the existing drainage system be placed on in the planning board file.
That has to be recorded.
Oh, is recorded at the registry? Thank you. That the report on the septic inspection of the septic system be placed in the planning board file. And that the note, that the following is added to the lighting note, that all lighting must comply with the town's existing ordinances.
Elevation corrections.
I did the elevation correction.
You did the...
I did the elevation.
Did they have the Fire Department code?
Oh, yeah, that was the last one. And that it meet all the Fire Department regulations.
And, did you do the no-activity, no lighting, wetland buffer? Unless right now.
And that there be a note that no activity will be placed in the wetland buffer.
Second, motion by Lynn, second by Phil.
90 days to meet the conditions?
90 days. 90 days to meet the conditions.
Now for the applicant, unless we put another timeframe on it, you have 90 days to meet this conditional approval and to have everything in to meet those conditions. Is that enough time?
Yeah, more than enough because he's going to push me to have it done.
The question is...
But reasonably, yes, because...
You need more time.
No, because all this information is really just mostly notes.
That's why.
I think we're, I think we're fine with the time.
So, so our standard 90 days to complete conditions is part of that.
Do we, well, do we need to increase the elevation view of the building?
No, I think the building is existing, I'm fine with that, I mean, it's existing building, there's not many changes.
Didn't Dennis just say?
So I didn't...
Yeah, just correcting the 500-foots from...
I mean, it's a picture of the time task.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to say, the correction.
I think if you were going to be modifying a building, building a new building, we'd want to see it, but under circumstances, it is what it is.
Are you agreeing?
I think they're talking about that.
Yeah, and we need to go like pictures of the building.
Phil? Those are us, Phil.
We haven't voted yet.
No, we haven't heard. We're still, we're still chit-chatting about anything else. All right, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So that's unanimous. Thank you for your patience. Good luck with the business.
Thank you.
And, you know, as soon as you get that stuff in, you'll be good to go.
Okay, okay.
So you need to...
No pressure.
You need to, yeah, no pressure.
I got one question. How do you say your road?
Palm Fagan.
Okay.
Nobody asked me that. Thank you for your time. Thank you. And I got to say, it wasn't nearly as hard as everybody told me it was coming to this board.
So it's a low five?
It is.
You're not even going to take you guys into trouble?
It is, and there's really nothing we can now do. Okay, so correspondence.
Make sure we've got everything.
Stay over.
Thank you, welcome to chat.
Good night. Okay, two things in the folder. We had nothing that requires action on our part. It's the bond balance sheet for your perusal, and the letter that Lynn Greenwood sent to Mr. Khalil regarding our 15/120, number 5/125. Mr. Khalil regarding our 15 Route 120, number 5 Route 125.
Okay, here's the only thing on that. Do you want to come in early to see him, or do you want him at the end? Your desk is clearly a little straight, and you have here Khalil, Golf Club Edition, Golf Club condo, St. Pass, and South Side subdivision.
Let's please do him first.
Could we come in at 6:30? Would folks be able to do that to him?
Where's Mr. Khalil?
We've invited him in because he wants to have his used car lot at where the little old lady used to be, and the board wanted to meet with him, making sure he was aware of.
Thanks.
Thanks. Are folks okay, are you starting a meeting at 6:30, is that all right for folks?
I will do my best.
Send that on mine, though.
Is she positive that?
Oh.
Well, maybe not, I don't know, it's already posted, it's in the paper.
Oh.
So what is.
Why do we have?
We can just remove first?
We'll just do it first, we'll just do.
Just do them first.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
He's not on the post, that's all, but that's okay, all, all we're doing is having.
It's a conversation.
A conversation, just wanted to say.
It's a conversation, okay.
Does that qualify as any other business that illegally?
Minutes of June 21?
The board can do that, aint they?
Well, they can, you could table those if you wish, or you can do it.
Oh, no, I can.
Well, you can table the minutes.
I don't think that's scientific, I mean, that would drive the day.
Me too. You already looked at them, you already told me that they do this.
Oh, that was, that was these minutes? Yes. I found a typo and told Ellen about it, so everything else is fine as far as I was concerned, so I make a motion that we accept them as intended.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Phil, discussion. In favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
Can I just?
That carries.
Oh.
We're under other board business.
I know. The planning board, the application that you sent out, the conditional use permit that you reviewed when I was at your last meeting, I did find.
Do we have to vote on the minutes first?
Oh, I thought.
The motion you just made, are we going to vote?
I thought.
We did. You voted, okay.
Did you, how did you vote?
Like favor.
Oh, good, because I said.
The only thing that I found on that when I reviewed it.
My what was that?
You had the area number 10, you just put it to the proposed ADU, but I didn't see anywhere we had the footage of the proposed entire unit. If the ADU is supposed to be a certain percentage of the entire unit, no more than, I think it's one-third the size, then I thought we would also need the square footage of the, of the buildings itself, the structures, thank you. So that was the only thing I saw on that, I just wanted to bring it to your attention before it went other places.
Good, yeah, thank you. Okay, Glenn said that he did forward to board members the little piece that I put together, that I was asked to do by the board, explaining the warrant articles, so that's, it's gone to the paper, it'll come out at some point, but I wanted to make sure that you all had it, just in case you started getting questions about them, and at least it was sort of the Cliff Notes version of boiling it down as best we could, doing just a short statement. All right, anything else?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:21, we'll call it 10:24. See you in a couple of weeks.